Awesome. Well, thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. We're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you. We've got quite the crowd this evening. So I think we'll start with a little bit of context about who we are, what our plan here is tonight, what the County Planning Commission does. So my name is Brian Pascoe. I'm the Chair of the Clackamas County Planning Commission. All of us here are members of the County Commission, or the Planning Commission, appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. We volunteer our time for this work because we care about the future of the county and care about the place that we live. And it's important to note that we are an advisory board of the County Commission. So we are not a decision-making body. Our role here tonight will be to formulate a recommendation to the County Planning Commission, County Commissioners. So my role as Chair is to ensure that everyone who signs up to testify has a chance to testify this evening, if necessary, either tonight, or if necessary, the continuation of the hearing on December 10th. To help everyone who testifies be comfortable and help the hearing progress go smoothly, I ask that you please be respectful of each other's testimony, refrain from clapping, booing, cheering, or otherwise verbally reacting to the speakers. If you wish to show your support for the speaker's comments, feel free to raise your hands tonight and let us know. So the process that we are going to follow this evening is threefold. First, we are going to, we typically have an open public comment period before this commission. It's for anyone who would like to testify on an issue that is not on our agenda. So there will be an opportunity, if you are here tonight, to speak on something other than marijuana. We would be happy to hear from you. We'll try and get you out before we move into the formal public hearing, and feel free to do that. Following that, the planning manager will briefly talk a little bit about the nature of this hearing tonight, testimony protocols, and the postcard that many of you received in the mail. And then finally, we will open the public hearing for the proceeding that we're talking about tonight. The hearing will begin with a presentation from staff, the introduction of any new correspondence into the record, and the presentation of any technical information for other government agencies. Then we will hear from all of you who want to testify about the proposed marijuana land use regulations. So thank you for being here tonight. I will say that in my many years on this commission, I have seen testimony from individuals profoundly change the direction that we go, the proposals that we make, the recommendations we form. So you all are a very important part of our process tonight, and we appreciate you being here to help us with that work. So with that, I will turn it over to staff.
Do you want to do just the general public comment first?
We could.
Do that first.
So is there anyone here who would like to speak on an issue not related to marijuana or not related to anything on our agenda tonight? Come on forward.
Let's go first. Can I sit down? Stand?
Yes, welcome. Go ahead and sit down. You don't need to give us your address, but if you could give us a sense of where you live, that's always helpful to us. If you would like, if, and I will say that for everyone who testifies this evening, you do not need to tell us exactly where you live, but if you would like to be on the mailing list, make sure you get that information to Darcy because that's the only way we'll be able to contact you. So, welcome. Go ahead and give us your name.
Thank you. My name is Virginia Redding, and this is my daughter Monica. And we live in Malala. Yes, and we live on, kind of like, the junction of 11, 211 and 213. And we were kind of surprised, right across the street from us, and we have a single-lane road. We're over there by Skydive, Oregon. And surprise, we have, we were, we had asked one of the workers there what they were planting, and they told us it was hemp.
But we don't know for certain if that's what it was.
Because during the growth of this, it was 17 acres that they grew. And during this, you could see that the center had different type of plants and different colors and different buds. And we're kind of here just to kind of inform you guys that it was horrific to live by. The smell was horrendous. It always smelled like a skunk. You couldn't go outside and enjoy yourself. I've got chronic bronchitis asthma. I couldn't even be outside without a mask half the time.
And I'm allergic, and it caused constant congestion that turned into a sinus infection that went into my lungs three different times, required antibiotics, inhalers, and two or three other medicines, and required time off of work. And the whole time they were growing the crop, I could not breathe through my nose. Tripped to the coast for two days. I could breathe just fine, but back into the hemp and marijuana-type plant, horrible, horrible infections and sinus congestion.
And if you were just even at the Safeway mall, if you're walking out of the Safeway store, you get hit with that smell. It is, it was really, you drive the freeway, or that, to 11 or 213, and you can smell it from quite a ways away. Now, we all live by the airstrip, so we all have an acre and a half lot, and we have our own wells. Well, we, all the neighbors, we have different depths of our wells. Well, some of my neighbors were affected because, as they were watering, they were tapping into other people's wells. And then you'd see them spraying those often.
With who knows what chemicals.
And considering our drinking water is
From the ground.
From the ground, you know, it would just kind of be nice if, you know, we had been kind of informed ahead of time. And I'm not here to, to, I know this forum isn't about hemp, but it's the fact that if in, if, as things progress, and I know that things aren't going to change, but if we can just let out that, for when these crops are planted, or could they, could they put in sight that they're not next to homes, not next to
Communities.
You know?
So close and grouped together.
Because it makes it really hard. You couldn't go outside because it always stunk.
And anything grown outside, like, I grow mint for my pet rabbit, it stunk like marijuana so bad, it caused her to sneeze and cough.
And we couldn't even bring it in the house. You pick your flowers, and your flowers stink, so you're not doing that.
And any vegetable garden items.
Yeah, you know, all summer long, I'm mowing the lawn and I'm wearing a mask at the same time. It's just, I, I'm not against them growing it. I'm just against them growing it around homes and
Families and communities and children.
And so I just kind of want to throw that out there. It's not, I'm not here to, to say what's right or what's wrong. I'm just putting them out there to where if you guys could help us get people to consider where these are growing, are going to be, that would be wonderful.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your testimony, and are there any questions from Commissioners at all? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on an issue not related to marijuana? Come on up.
One up, Rob. You're very Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Robert May, and I actually live a couple houses down from the nice people that just spoke. And I, I mean, I don't really have a lot to add to that, except that she's right. When they, when they first started growing, I could care less, basically. I'm all about freedom and all that. But as it, as the growing, as the season progressed, it got so horrendous. I mean, we couldn't open our windows during the day and enjoy the fresh air of spring and summer, as well as in the evenings. And everything, the smell of it permeated everything in our homes. I mean, everything smelled like it, even the insides of our clothing, our furniture. I mean, it was really, seriously horrible. And, and what Virginia mentioned about the wells, too, when they began to irrigate this summer, I started picking up flecks of black sand in my water coming into the house and actually had to install a filter. And that only happens when the water gets really low. This happened to us one other time a few years ago, when one of the local farmers drilled a new well, and they were pumping a lot of water 24 hours a day on corn. And there were five of us in our neighborhood, and there's 16 of us that have homes out there, and we're all on two separate streets here, but we're just right across from one another and live in that air park area. It's called Flyer's Haven. And we had to have our wells lowered, and so that's really a concern for me, too, you know, additional irrigation out there. And when Virginia says they're just right across the road, they are. I mean, our roads are, we don't have a county-approved road. It's a road that we all keep up ourselves, and it's only about maybe 10 feet wide with ditches on both sides. And I mean, the field is just right there. So from our front yard, this grow is only maybe 30 feet away, and it's about 17 acres. Yeah, but it got, the smell of that got so bad this summer, I mean, it was really, it was really horrible. So other than this, and also Virginia's daughter mentioned about the allergies, my wife was sneezing and had headaches all summer long. This has never happened to her before. And as soon as we RV quite a bit, we're both recently retired, and in the minute we left town for a couple of weeks or a month at a time, no problems. But just like Virginia's daughter, the minute we came back, it all started up again. So I guess, basically, I'm just saying the same thing that she is, you know, but it is a serious concern of ours. And I, I, again, I had no idea it was going to be that way. Like I said, when they first planted it, I thought, hey, no big deal, you know, but it really got horrible.
Right.
So I know that doesn't really have a lot to do probably with what you guys are here to discuss tonight, so that's about all I have, you know, but thanks for, you know, letting us speak.
Thank you, thank you. And we obviously have discussed these issues quite a bit, and will continue to discuss that. I would encourage you to communicate with the staff here about your specific address, and they can talk to you about any potential enforcement issues or other things that you might be able to do outside of current regulations.
Well, there was one other thing, too, while we were gone, and one of our neighbors saw it, but when we, well, let's just put it this way, when we came home from a trip, we noticed that the fence had been cut between our house and the field there, or on the other side of the road from us. And I didn't know if it was so they could access their field or not. As it turns out, I was, I mentioned it to one of the guys that was out in that field a few days later after we'd returned home. Turns out, he's a part-owner of the operation, super-nice guy. You know, I asked him a few questions about it. He was happy to answer them. But evidently, somebody parked on our property late one night, cut that fence, went in there thinking it was something they could evidently benefit from, and stole a bunch of his plants and hauled them off. But that, that also presents a concern for me, too. I really don't feel comfortable, if it's going to attract that kind of person, you know, to the area to where they're actually maybe parking on my property or doing something that's illegal, in this case, stealing from the grower, you know, it makes you a little uneasy as well. So I don't know if that's a common problem or not, but anyway.
Question?
Robert.
Yes.
Is this something that's just happened, or is this, have they had that field there for quite a while?
Well, you know, they came in and planted this spring, and it wasn't until probably a month before they actually harvested it that this took place, as far as the fence cutting and that. And the guy said they didn't take enough to really hurt them financially, and he kind of chuckled about it because he said, I don't know what they thought it was, but if they smoke it, they're not going to get any benefit from it, you know. But it just, it concerned me that one of our neighbors said they actually saw the car park on our property. You know, if you're awake at all at night, it's a dead-end road. And if, if the neighbors are up and they're paying attention to who's coming up and down the road at that, you know, later on in the evening, you know, well, anyway, I guess where I'm getting at is, you're bound to be noticed if you come up that road at all, you know, day or night, by someone. But it just made me a little nervous to have somebody that was of the character that was stealing, parking on my property while I wasn't there, and cutting the fence right directly across from my house. It makes me feel like, okay, were they aware that maybe we weren't home, and maybe they'd like to help themselves to something that we have, too, like break into our shop or our house or something, you know? I mean, that, that's where I'm going with this.
So this is the first year they've had a crop?
Yeah, yeah, you know, for years, the owners of that property have done very little more than just a, maybe mow it once or twice a season to keep the, you know, the brush under control. And there were several years when nothing was done with it, and for so, for the last several years, there really hasn't been any activity or anything really done out there. So when they started tilling it this spring and getting it ready for a crop and cleaning it up, we all thought, hey, this is kind of neat, you know, they're cleaning the place up, they're going to grow something out here. And then all the rest of, you know, the water levels in our well dropped, and then eventually the smell of this stuff. And it didn't smell that bad until about two months before they finally harvested it, and it was, it was mind-blowing how strong it was. I had no idea it would, it could be like that, you know, but
Well, thank you very much, Robert.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Try and keep things moving on as best we can.
Yeah, I bet.
Again, let us know how we might help. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on an issue not related to marijuana? We have one more. If you could, we have, obviously have, we have several people. Go ahead and come up to the table. We obviously have a lot of folks who would like to testify tonight, so appreciate if you would keep your comments brief, and we'll probably start to be a little more strict on that as we move through, through the evening. So welcome.
Welcome. My name is Lowell Gillespie, and this is not the subject that I came here for. But listening to the other people talk about it, I'm a captain on a boat and registered with the Coast Guard, and do you know that if this smell is, if somebody's like you next door to you and has this same problem, and you're breathing that, does that come up on a drug test?
No.
It doesn't. You have to breathe it in your lungs. Dissmelling it won't, won't bother you. I mean, it won't come up on a drug test. If that's the case, I'm fine.
Thank you. Thank you for your evening. Again, issues not related to marijuana. Come on up.
I just have a comment, too, from listening to the other folks. I'm just curious if there's going to be some
Excuse me, what was your name again?
Diane Moser.
Diane, thank you.
Yeah. I'm just curious if there'll be some type of ruling coming down in the future for marijuana growers, hemp growers, and regular farmers to actually use drip irrigation on their farms instead of the way that they use the water now, because I feel like we're wasting the precious resource. I know my well on my farm also gets dry in the, in the summer, but I use all drip irrigation. And I think since we're in a drought, and we don't know if it's going to continue, that would be a smart thing to put into place sooner than later. That's just my comment.
Great, thank you. I would encourage you to express that to the Department of Agriculture. Oregon Department of Agriculture would regulate that and not necessarily us. So it's a good idea. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to testify on an issue not related to marijuana? Okay, I don't see any more. I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer, and Jennifer's going to talk a little bit about the protocols that we're going to follow for the remainder of the hearing. So thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Hughes. I'm the Planning Manager, and I just want to welcome everybody tonight. And to thank you for attending, I want to do just a few staff introductions of people that you might need to interface with while you're here tonight. First of all, Darcy Renhard is our Administrative Assistant, and if you have testimony cards like this that you have filled out but have not turned in yet, you can hand her those. Or if you decide you want to testify during, you know, as you're listening to other people speak, it's not too late for you to do that. You do need to sign up tonight if you want to speak. The testimony sheets are still in the back of the room, or are in the back of the room now, if you don't have one yet. If you have one and you want to turn it in, just give those to Darcy. Martha Fritzy, who's sitting next to Darcy, is going to accept any written testimony. So if you have a statement that you want to read and then you want to turn it in for the record, or you just brought something you want to turn in, you can give that to her, and that'll get an exhibit stamp and go into the record, which will go not just to the Planning Commission, but also to the Board of County Commissioners for their hearing in January. In addition, Martha's going to be running the timer tonight. Generally speaking, it's three minutes per speaker for these hearings, and so that timer will be up on that iPad, and so you can, and it'll be facing you, so you can kind of watch it. I think we can make that work, right? And then it'll kind of, you know, go off at the end to let you know, you need to wrap up your comments at that point. Let's see, a couple practical considerations. Restrooms and water are both located, so straight out these doors, to the left past the stairs, take a right at the bottom of the stairs, straight ahead. There's both a water fountain and bathrooms there if you need them. Also, the postcards, the green postcards, I see some people have them with them tonight. And I just wanted to clarify, we sent those out to over 13,000 property owners. So if you got one of those, it's because you own land that is zoned in such a way that tonight's proposal affects your land. It doesn't necessarily mean that what the postcard says is true, in that your property value may be reduced. We don't know. We haven't evaluated that, but we're required to include that on notices like this by state law. So just clarifying, that's why you got it, because you own land zoned that way. It doesn't mean that anybody in particular is proposing to grow marijuana next to you. They might already be growing marijuana near you. They might grow marijuana near you in the future, but that, that postcard is about a proposal to change our zoning regulations, not about any specific proposal to do something on a site near you. Let's see, what else? The limits of this project. So what is before the Planning Commission tonight is just to consider limiting the number of licensed or registered marijuana grow sites per tract of land. So a contiguous area of land owned by the same person, the proposal is to provide that they can have only one, one license or one Oregon Health Authority registration for marijuana. That's it. I know there's a lot of other considerations out there. We heard some of them in the preliminary comments tonight. But the notice for this is just to limit the number of production licenses or registrations, and the Planning Commission cannot consider other changes other than the few little sort of housekeeping edits that staff has proposed. You all got a copy of the proposal on your chair tonight, as well as a copy of the staff report, and Glenn Hamburg, who's running point on this project, is going to be giving a staff report in more detail in just a minute. So with that, I would really encourage you to direct your testimony to the proposal. That's how you can be most effective tonight in terms of, you know, kind of trying to persuade, I guess if you will, the Planning Commission to your point of view, would be really to focus on what's proposed. And then finally, if you do have additional recommendations for changes to the county's marijuana regulations or to other changes, every year, we take suggestions for our annual work program, and that comment period is open now. So if you want to submit something that says we want you to do something different with your marijuana regulations that's outside of the scope of this project, you can do that, either by dropping it off upstairs in our permits lobby on the second floor during regular business hours, or by emailing it if you want. I'm happy to give you my email address, or any of the other staff people that you see around here tonight would be happy to provide you with that information so that you could submit suggestions if you would like.
Thank you, Jennifer. So with that, we are going to officially open the public hearing for consideration of ZDO 271. If you all will bear with me, I'm going to read a little bit of a script. It will tell you a little bit about how we're going to proceed tonight and get us moving. So the public hearing is now open. It is legislative proposal to amend Section 841 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance regarding marijuana land use regulations. The Planning Commission is charged with making a recommendation on this, on this proposal to the Board of County Commissioners. The entire record for this hearing, including both written and verbal testimony, will be forwarded to the Board, which will make the final decision in the matter. The Board of County Commissioners will conduct another hearing on this legislative proposal on Wednesday, January 16, 2019, at 9:30 a.m. in the Board Hearing Room on the fourth floor of the Public Services Building. And that's right next door. That hearing will be de novo, meaning that the hearing will be started anew, and additional verbal and written testimony may be offered. The room is available here tonight until 10 p.m. That means we will conclude testimony at approximately 9:30 and decide how to proceed and close the hearing no later than 9:45 p.m. If necessary, the hearing will be continued to Monday, December 10, to conclude testimony and/or deliberate and provide a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The continued hearing will be held in the same location and begin no earlier than 7:30 p.m. If an announcement of that additional hearing date and time is made tonight, it will be the only notice given for that hearing. So the conduct of the hearing, the public hearing will be conducted as follows. First, there'll be a report from the Planning and Zoning Division staff, we'll get to very briefly, very shortly. Entry into the record of any additional correspondence that we've received. Presentation of technical information from other government agencies who might be here. Testimony by representatives of recognized community planning organizations or hamlets. And those folks will get a maximum of five minutes if you're representing a CPO or a hamlet. Testimony by any person, we're going to be limiting that testimony to three minutes tonight. We obviously have a lot of folks who would like to talk to us tonight, so we are going to try and get, we appreciate if you would respect that time. And then finally, the Planning Commission will deliberate and consider a recommendation to the County Commission. So if you wish to speak tonight, please fill out, there are forms in the back, please fill out the bottom of the public hearing guidelines page if you've not already done so, tear off the bottom part and submit that to the staff at the back of the room. Keep the top part, because it includes the number that I will use to call you up when it's time to speak. I will call speakers in pairs of two to the testimony table at the front of the room based on the number on your testimony card. The next two numbers will also be called and asked to come forward, and you're welcome to sit. There's some open seats right here in front. We'll just try and keep things moving as quickly as we can. Again, testimony will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Please state your name for the record when you come to the testimony table. We are using a timer, and when you reach the end of your time, we expect you to conclude your testimony so that others here tonight have a chance to testify. Really appreciate it, folks, when that time is up, wrap up as quickly as you can, just so we can kind of keep things moving and make sure everyone has a chance to speak. Everybody who completes a testimony card tonight before the end of the public testimony will have a chance to testify either tonight, or if you are unable, we will complete that testimony at the next hearing. Even if it continues as scheduled for December 10, no new testimony will be allowed if you have not signed up this evening. The hearing is being recorded, so please speak clearly into the microphone. The audio and video recordings will be posted on the Planning Commission webpage by tomorrow afternoon. The only amendments under consideration tonight are those included in the public notice and contained in the draft section of 841 of the Zoning and Development Ordinance. So what that basically means is, we are very limited in the scope tonight, so we are addressing only those issues that are addressed in the postcard and in the proposed change. So if you have issues outside of that, please understand that we're not going to be able to address those within this proceeding, and we'll, we're happy to talk to you more about that. So with that, I will turn it over to Glenn, who will provide the staff report for the proposal.
Very good. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening. I'm Glenn Hamburg. I'm a Planner II here with the Planning and Zoning Division, and I prepared the staff report, and will give some summary of it and some additional information to you tonight. This proposal is ZDO 271, for the record. The title of the proposal is Marijuana Production License Limits. And as others have already sort of mentioned, it proposes legislative text amendments to a section of the county's Zoning and Development Ordinance, that's Section 841. The amendments would do two things, generally. The first is that they would limit the number of licensed growers of marijuana on properties that are zoned ag forests, exclusive farm use, or timber. Only those three zones. In addition, the proposal would clarify, without actually making substantive changes, to existing criteria related to marijuana production and processing, for clarity, and I'll summarize those later in this presentation. First, though, just a little bit of background to get everybody on the same page. Prior to 2016, medical marijuana in Clackamas County was regulated like other horticultural uses in the zones where those uses are permitted. And it wasn't until 2016 that some adopted land use regulations for recreational production and medical marijuana production took effect. So it's 2016 that these regulations initially took effect, but the county made some amendments to those initial regulations last year to apply fencing standards, to allow processing, and to address some other matters that you might recall. Still, though, even with those amendments, the county has no limits on the number of licensed growers that can be on any size piece of property in the ag forest, exclusive farm use, or timber zone. As long as you're allowed to produce there by the Zoning and Development Ordinance, you can have as much production as you would like to fit in. So to be sure, there's no limit right now on the amount of marijuana that can be produced on property in these zones. There's no limit on the number of associated structures or their size in these zones. The only restrictions that might limit you of how much you can grow is just the size of the property you have and applicable setbacks. The Zoning and Development Ordinance has some requirements for indoor production and some other requirements for outdoor production. For example, indoor production needs to be indoors, needs to be odor-filtered to certain standards, and meet the general setback requirements of structures for that zone. Outdoor production, which is defined in the code, outdoor production is any production of marijuana that doesn't have artificial lighting on mature flowering plants. Outdoor production does not necessarily need to be odor-filtered. It just needs to be set back an additional, or it needs to be set back 100 feet from property lines. So Section 841 outlines some of those specific differences between indoor and outdoor production right now. Otherwise, there's really little Otherwise, there's really little distinction between recreational marijuana and medical marijuana in terms of production and how the county regulates it. In Section 841, there are provisions that allow medical marijuana production to be exempt from certain requirements such as odor mitigation and the acoustical study requirements, so long as that medical production, even if it's indoors, is 100 feet from property lines. Aside from that, though, recreational and medical, as far as county land use regulations, are basically the same. But this is where things get a little bit wordy. At the state level, things are different. Recreational marijuana production in that program is administered by the Oregon Liquor Control Commission, OLCC, and medical is regulated by the Oregon Health Authority, OHA. So OLCC licenses marijuana production, and OHA registers medical production, hence why we're using the two terms in this proposal. A little bit wordy, but staying precise. What OLCC is specifically licensing is something called a premises. They license premises for recreational marijuana production. OHA, though, registers grow sites for medical marijuana production. The OLC's regulations relate to the size of the canopy of mature, that's flowering, plants. So they will, depending on the tier of the production license you get from OLCC, allow you to grow a certain square footage of mature plant canopy in your designated premises. That's different than the OHA. They don't regulate marijuana by the size of any canopy, rather they regulate based on the number of plants. Another difference is that OLCC regulates the number of producers per tax lot, whereas OHA regulates the number of plants per patient address. So a little bit different standard of what the limits are for any given space. As of the beginning of this month, according to OLCC, there are 161 licensed production premises in all of Clackamas County, in all zones. Unfortunately, OLCC doesn't provide this data relevant to the county's zoning designations, so we don't know how many of these just relate to the three zones we're considering in this ordinance, but there's 161 licensed production premises in industrial zones, natural resource zones, and elsewhere. OHA reports earlier this spring that there are just shy of 1,300 registered medical marijuana grow sites in Clackamas County, and 83% of those are for growing plants for just one patient. What I've provided here are some pictures of medical, I'm sorry, marijuana grow sites and facilities in other states, because I didn't want to name and shame or draw attention to any specific site here in the county. But these pictures are similar to the types of structures that are being put up here in the county for marijuana production, both indoor and outdoor. Because importantly, outdoor marijuana production might still occur in a building, it might occur in a greenhouse, as long as it doesn't have artificial lighting on mature flowering plants, then it counts as outdoor production. So for example, up in the top left, we have some structures that have some greenhouse-style roofs. The top right is another building that has these light deprivation tarps that can scroll across the top and over the windows. In the bottom left, there's a pole barn that's typical of a lot of the indoor production facilities in the county's natural resource zones. Some of these pole barns, just off the top of my head, might measure 50 by 100 feet, 50 by 200 feet. And then this is what maybe one of those buildings could look like in the inside. Now for some numbers. And as I talk about these numbers, I'm going to try to be very careful to underscore that they're not necessarily something scientific, but we want to give you a sense of how much production has been approved so far, and what these proposed amendments might do in terms of impacts on those approvals. So there's somewhere around 200 approvals that the county has issued for marijuana production in these three relevant zones. And if you go through those approvals and you add up the amount of space that the county approved for production that could be used just, that could be used for mature plant production, we figure there's about 200 acres approved so far in the county. So again, this means that we estimate there's about 200 acres in Clackamas County's own ag forest, EFU, or TBR that could, based on those approvals we've already given, be used for mature marijuana production. This doesn't include all of the area that might be associated with production. For example, a marijuana producer might have buildings that are only used for drying, trimming, curing, storage, security, those kinds of things. And to the extent that they identify those in their land use permits, we've not counted them in here. We're only counting the area that, based on what we said, could be used for mature flowering canopy. So the majority of that total 200 acres is in the EFU zone, about 66% of that 200 acres is in the EFU zone. 27% might be in the TBR zone, and the remaining seven is going to be in the ag forest zone. Of all of that approved, potentially usable space for mature marijuana production, about 60% of it is for indoor production and about 40% for outdoor in all zones. This map is also on the wall here just behind you, in case you'd like to take a closer look. What I wanted to show with this isn't so much of the high-level detail, it's just the distribution. This is a map of those roughly 200 approvals that I just mentioned. So this is where in the county, the Planning and Zoning Division has issued land use approvals for marijuana production in those three zones. There's two different shades of green that you can see closer if you go up to the paper version, that distinguish between indoor and outdoor, in case you're curious. Just a couple of notes of caution, the squares are just symbols, they don't represent literal sizes of space, just to make sure that that's clear. The square on the map doesn't depict the actual relevant land area for that space. And these are only approximate locations. We didn't want to put specifically where it is, but maybe just in the middle of the subject property. So what you can take away from this, I think, is that marijuana production has been approved, both indoor production and outdoor production, all over the county. And if you're curious on how this relates to different zoning designations, we also have a zoning map on the wall behind us. So what we're trying to, since we're considering limiting the number of licensed premises or registered grow sites per property, we wanted to give, endeavor to give some sense of, well, how does that relate to what we've already approved and what those producers' original intentions were? That's a little bit tricky, because the county's never had a license limit, and so we never required people to tell us if they intended to have multiple licensed grow sites on a property or not. So we did our best to infer based on the amount of square footage that they asked for and we approved, that could be used for mature marijuana plant production, based on the various tier levels of maybe how many licensed grow sites could you get on a property? And here's what we came up with. Considering all that, we figure that there are maybe 40% of all of the indoor production, indoor mature marijuana plant production that we've approved, about 40% of those approvals could be used for more than one licensed premises. So there are approximately 40% of these approvals where we estimate, gosh, we've approved so much space that no doubt that producer intended to have more than one licensed premises, simply because it's more maybe than what the maximum license tier would allow. About 47%, we figure could only accommodate one licensed producer for indoor production, and the remainder, we're just not sure. Outdoor production, we estimate 23% could allow for multiple licensed facilities. 43% for outdoor, maybe just one, because the total amount of square footage is just so small. But there's a huge amount that we're just not sure what the intentions were. So the Board of County Commissioners has heard from the public and has expressed concerns that having multiple licensed producers or registered grow sites on a property might bring too much onsite activity and development than is appropriate for these natural resource zones. And frankly, marijuana is a crop that's different than most other crops in how it's raised and grown, right? It's something that, if it's indoors, could potentially be grown all year round, unlike other crops. And the nature of the canopy size restrictions for licensing by the OLCC might create an incentive for a property owner to lease out portions of their property to multiple growers. Since there's a canopy limit, they might endeavor to have more licensed producers on their property, all working within their individual canopy size limit. And maybe having multiple producers on there is just creating more activity than there would be if there was just one. So there might be activity associated with employees coming by the property, vehicle trips, the work hours of these employees, noise that they might be causing, the number of structures that get built on a property, the type of structures might be more than is appropriate for these natural resource zones. So the Board of County Commissioners approved our annual work plan with a directive to propose a license limit, and so that's how we got here. And I think earlier there were a couple of questions people had of, you know, why are we proposing this? It's a directive from the Board of County Commissioners. So I mentioned there are two proposals in this package, and that first is the proposal to limit a tract, which is one or more contiguous lots under the same ownership, in these zones to only one licensed premises for recreational production, or only one grow site registered for medical production by the OHA. The other proposal that I mentioned that deals with these non-substantive clarifying amendments, everybody should have a copy of what the proposed amendments are on the chair, and other than those license limits, these amendments would do sort of cleanup measures. So they would further standardize the access provisions that we have. There's a provision in the ZDO in Section 841 that relates to criteria for a shared access to a grow. And so we wanted to make that language the same as the language for a similar policy in other code sections, so it's just a matter of keeping the language the same. We correct some references to licensed engineers to reflect how the state actually terms engineers' licenses. We change yard depth to setback, we clarify the applicability of noise standards, but importantly, we don't change those standards, just making them clear to readers based on two years of answering questions about that one provision. And then we provide some consistency with the other sections of the ZDO's formatting and content, so literally things like adding semicolons here and whatnot. So the Planning Commission had a study session in last month, and it sounds like there were two significant issues that were discussed then, and what the staff report sort of zeroes in on. And one of them is, well, should there be a limit on the number of licensed/registered producers in these zones? And if so, how should that limit be applied? Should it be applied per tract, per lot of record, per certain acreage? So we'll talk about that. And then another significant issue that got up, that got brought up was what might be the effect on previously approved or implemented land uses if this measure gets adopted? So starting with that one significant issue first, should there be a limit on licenses/registrations? Well, on the one hand, staff believes that doing so may reduce the level of activity and the intensity of development on future marijuana production sites. I think it's reasonable to believe that if you can limit the number of licenses, that there might end up being less employees, less vehicles, less development generally than there might be if there was only one licensed producer. Marijuana production, as I mentioned, might just be more intensive of farm use than other crops, and so it might merit having these license and registration limitations. And adopting these amendments would respond to those public concerns and complaints that the Board had heard. On the other hand, though, the scope of farming of other crops is not limited, including of hemp, and this proposal would not affect the production of other crops, including the production of hemp. So I've heard, and I believe other staff have heard, but we've not been able to verify or quantify, that there might be producers who are only growing industrial hemp, and they might even have land use authority to process onsite and to turn it into CBD oils or other items. This proposal would not affect the production of industrial hemp, and it's still possible that a farm could lease out portions of their space to multiple hemp growers. Additionally, this proposal may not affect existing operations, because as, you know, you're pretty well-versed in non-conforming uses, those uses that are, were legally established at one point before rules changed are generally allowed to continue. So if there's concerns that there is a legally established production operation somewhere in the county that has multiple licensed growers operating now, if it was legally established, these amendments not, might not do anything to affect that particular case. It could be that just into the future prevent more. However, this would require potentially a non-conforming use verification of property owners, if they, for whatever instance, need to prove that they have the right to have multiple licensed growers on their property, because they were established before these amendments are adopted. They might need to go through a formal process to verify that with the county. And if they wanted to change that legally non-conforming use, they might need to apply for an alteration of a non-conforming use to the county. So that would be additional paperwork, an expense, and staff time, potentially. It may reduce the amount of income opportunities that property owners in these zoning designations have, and that might limit the growth of the marijuana industry. So for property owners who are hoping to be able to lease out portions of their land to marijuana producers to gain a little income, it's possible that they could not do that anymore. Finally, there might be external factors in Oregon that are already going to restrict the growth of marijuana production in the county, and that's referenced in the staff report, but factors, for example, the reported overproduction, the glut of marijuana in Oregon that you might have heard about. OHA also reports that they have, that they're seeing a year-by-year decrease in the number of requests for registered grow sites. So these external factors might already limit the expansive production in the future. But should the county wish to adopt license and registration restrictions? They might choose to do so, like I said, by tract, by lot of record, or maybe some acreage standard. Here are staff's thoughts on those different ideas. Well, if you go by tract, this would be the most restrictive thing that the county could do, because you could get theoretically the least amount of licenses and registrations per given area. And so to the extent that the county is interested in making sure that this license and registration limit reduces the amount of onsite activity and development, this might get the most bang for your buck, if that makes sense. Also, marijuana production in Section 841 is already governed on a tract standard. So in order to produce at all in these zones indoors, you have to have at least a tract that's two acres in area, and then it's five acres for outdoor production. So since we already use that tract terminology and that kind of base unit, it might make the most sense to adopt a tract standard here as well. Otherwise, the language might be a bit confusing in the regulations for readers. However, if you go by a tract standard, there are ways to quote-unquote "get around" that. So a tract, as I mentioned, is one or more contiguous lots under the same ownership. So if I'm a farmer with three adjacent lots of record, all owned by myself and only myself, I could, under this proposal- I could, under this proposal, change the ownership of one of those parcels and get another licensed production facility on that property, potentially. Administering this limit on a per-tract standard might be slightly more time-consuming for staff. I'm only bringing that up to the extent that that's a concern of yours. To be sure, the Planning and Zoning Division will faithfully administer whatever rules that get adopted. So, it might be more time-consuming because staff will have to verify the ownership of surrounding parcels. Importantly, though, a tract isn't any consistent-sized piece of property, of course. A tract can vary in size. I can have three adjacent lots that in total is only five acres, or it could be, you know, 150 acres. Nonetheless, under these rules, the limitation would be the same, one per five acres or one per 150 acres. So, what if we limited on, by per lot of record? One licensed premises or one registered grow site per lot of record? Well, it's easier to administer for staff. We don't need to check the ownership of the adjacent parcels. But as I mentioned, given that we reference a tract for the minimum size of a property you need to grow in the first place, it might be confusing in the way that the language of the regulation shapes up. Of course, just like a tract, lot sizes vary also. I might have a lot of record that's only five acres and get one licensed premises. While my neighbor has 100 acres, and they also get one licensed premises. So, maybe there's a limit that's based on some per-acreage standard. Arguably, this could be the fairest to owners who have large tracts or lots, because if I have something large, maybe I can have multiple licenses, but somebody who has a small piece of property can only have one. And maybe that's deemed fairer. Staff isn't sure, though, what an appropriate per-acre limit would be, so that would be something to discuss. I think it's also worth discussing whether there should be the same limits for indoor production and outdoor production, given that indoor production for recreational has different canopy-size limits than outdoor production. Outdoor production takes more space. Also, the language for limits ideally would consider that tract-size standards that I mentioned, given that you have to have two acres of a tract for indoor production or five for outdoor. Maybe the per-acreage standard for license limits relates to that in some way. And then, I think it's also important to note that if there's an interest in requiring licensed premises or registered grow sites to be a certain separation distance from one another on an allowed piece of property, that might have unintended consequences, that might actually end up creating greater impacts to the surrounding area than if they were allowed to be kept close together. So, a property owner might end up be using more of their farmland to space these facilities out, or pushing them closer to property lines than if they were allowed to keep them close the same. So, on the other significant issue, those non-substantive amendments, oh, I'm sorry, on the effect of the amendments on previously approved or implemented marijuana production land uses. I'm going to be super careful, and maybe our council will smack me if I go too far. But there's not a lot of certainty or clarity that we can give as to what will happen with any given approval and its ability to be continued in the, in the future. So, a property where, that already has multiple licensed growers now, that they have their license from the state, they're built, they're operating within the rules of their county-issued land use permit, they may be legally non-conforming and allowed to continue, as I talked about. But just that county-issued land use permit saying you can have 100,000 square feet of space for marijuana production may not be enough for an NCU right. Sure, 100,000 square feet is well more than any one tier of a license, or that any tier of a license could get you. So, I would assume that that grower's intention was to have multiple licensed growers there. But if you didn't actually go out and get those licenses and establish yourself, that might be not enough to establish a non-conforming use right. Of course, all non-conforming use rights simply need to be verified through an established process, requires an application, and some systematic rules of what we're going to consider counts or not counts. And then, as I mentioned at the beginning, that alterations of those non-conforming use rights would also require county approval. So, if a land use permit was given, but licenses not issued and not fully implemented, you might not have a valid non-conforming use right. And if you wanted to show that it was your intention to have multiple licensed growers there, nonetheless, you might need to apply for a vested right determination. So, based on all of that, staff is recommending the legislative text amendments in the tract changes of the document that you have, a license limit per tract, because, as I mentioned, this would likely have the greatest effect on addressing the concerns that the Board had. And staff recommends approval of the text amendments that also include those non-substantive amendments that I mentioned. Wow, I actually got through that. So, thank you. Yeah, and I'll just be available to answer some questions that you have.
Thank you. Thank you, Glenn. I will start by saying your staff report and this presentation was very clear and very helpful, and thank you for all of your work on this, so.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Glenn.
At this point in time, we'll open the floor for any clarifying questions from the Commission. You know, we're going to have a lot of testimony tonight, so I will just underscore the clarification piece, and the more that we can not go into deliberation, that would be appreciated. So, questions?
I have a question.
Mike?
Are both of these proposals exclusive, or do they both have to be enacted simultaneously?
Hmm, the, can the issue one, the production license limits, be considered separate from the non-substantive amendments? I believe so.
So, the wording in the non-substantive amendments, or whatever, is not going to affect what happens in the first proposal about limitations?
Correct. You could choose to adopt both measures, or neither, or one or the other.
Murph, did you have some? On a tract, is the landowner the ultimate responsible party? Or is it each permit is the responsible party?
Responsible for compliance with?
Complying with land use?
It's my understanding that it's the property owner that's ultimately responsible for it.
Be ultimately.
Yeah, and we do, when we take in a land use permit application, the applicant doesn't need to be the property owner, and I feel like I'm, it's safe to say that it's often not. Nonetheless, the property owner has to sign the application and agree to it.
So, he is the ultimate, or she would be the ultimate responsible party?
Yeah.
I just have a clarifying question. So, can you do both? Get a license for recreational and a medical grow in the same tract?
Good question, potentially. The way that I understand the regulations, and here's why, is that a recreational grow cannot be at the same address as a registered grow site. But there's not necessarily a county prohibition on there being multiple addresses on a property. In fact, it's somewhat common that a single tract of land has multiple addressed buildings. So, I'm not super familiar with what the OHA will accept, but as I read the regulations, it would be possible to have, on the same tract, a registered, or a licensed recreational premises, and elsewhere on that tract, a marijuana grow site, as long as they're on separate addresses.
But under the proposal we're looking at tonight, it would be one or the other?
Correct.
My question's about impact. Slide eight, you called out 47% for one grower, 40% of more than, or could be more than one, and 13, which is unknown. Is it known by OL, the state, as far as what that 13% is doing, as far as?
Good question. So, these numbers are just what could happen, not what is actually happening. These numbers show what the county approved that landowners could do, and based on those approvals, we figure that if all of those approvals were fully implemented, we try to figure out how many licenses that might figure out to.
And that's how it relates to the 200 acres that could be developed?
Yeah.
In a different slide?
But we don't know how many of these production licenses were actually issued. We only know that 161 production licenses were issued for the whole county in all zones.
What was the vintage of that 161?
I'm sorry?
What was the vintage? What was the, that data sample was of today, or?
November 2nd.
November 2nd, thank you.
Murius, did you have a question?
I have one quick clarifying question. When you're looking at how you're proposing to limit it by tract, by lot of record, by certain acreage, when you're looking at the acreage, is that a total acreage of a tract, a total acreage of a lot of record, or which were you representing in the staff report? And then, also for the second part of the, if you're limiting it by certain acreage, if there are multiple license on a property, the, whether it's consolidated or put separately might have additional impacts, that wouldn't necessarily have to be regulated if it was by a certain acreage? The applicant could choose whether to put them together or disperse them, correct?
Correct. Under the proposed, so on that question first, under the proposed amendments, there's no requirement that multiple license facilities be separated from each other or kept together in any certain way. But the question about the certain acreage, there is, in the staff report, we didn't consider any specific acreage, but these thoughts consider the possibility that you might choose to limit the number of licenses in grow sites to, given a certain number of acres. So, maybe you get one license per five acres, or two licenses per five acres.
So, my question was five acres of what? So, that could either be five acres of a tract, or five acres of a lot of record? It could go either way?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Since this is a product that is mostly grown in my area anyway, under artificial light, this is still considered farming. Is there any other crop in Oregon that we can compare this to that's grown under artificial light?
Gosh.
That we know of? That is a controlled substance, or, and has certain limitations to how much you can produce? That we can compare this to?
I'm not a farmer, so I don't know. I don't know if producers of hemp grow under artificial light, for example, but this is the only crop that I'm aware of that people are likely growing under artificial lighting indoors potentially all year round.
Okay. I don't see any other questions, so we will keep moving on with the proceeding. Glenn, have we received any correspondence on this matter, other than those items in the meeting packet?
Yes, we got four new written comments that we included in a packet with you. They're exhibits nine through 12, so they've been added to the record. And other than that, we've got no comments from CPOs, hamlets, cities, or other governmental agencies.
Are there any other government agencies here who would like to provide technical information related to this proposal? And we've received nothing, I assume? Great, we will check that off the list. Perfect. So, we are going to move forward, for this is the moment we've all been waiting for, into the public testimony. We are going to start first, Darcy, thank you. We are going to start with, are there any representatives of community planning organizations or hamlets here to speak this evening? Thank you. And seeing none, that's great, we can move on. So, we are now going to move on to the individual public testimony. Again, I'm going to call the first couple of numbers, feel free to come to the table. I'll also call a few additional ones, and you can, if you're, if you need easier access, feel free to move up. We're going to try and keep this moving as quickly as we can. Again, please try and keep your comments to about three minutes. And then, we will take a break at some point, but I don't think we're there yet, so just bear with us as we get there. So, without further ado, we're going to start with numbers one and two. Welcome, Shirley. And then, four, five, and six, feel free to be up on deck, or if you, you're welcome to stay seated as well, as long as you can get here fairly quickly. Welcome.
Are we ready?
We are set when you are.
Good evening, Commission. It is nice to see you again, Brian. I haven't been to a Planning Commission meeting for a while, and nice to see the staff again. I usually see them on a regular basis. My name is Shirley Morgan with the Citizens for Public Safety, Quality of Life, and Property Values. Currently, there are over 547 marijuana land use applications that have been applied for in this county. Seventy-five percent of those have been for marijuana production. I'm not talking about OLCC licenses issued. OLCC on their website is noting that we have 86 processors, 43 retailers, four labs, and 36 wholesalers. This does not include the 3,448 Grandfather Dan Medical Marijuana Grow Sites that were in existence prior to the law, nor does it include the illegal marijuana grows that go undetected, or the allowed four recreational plant grows per household, many of which are overgrowing and selling to the black market. Over 75% of the marijuana being grown is being sent out of state. There are two known large multi-site locations. One, 56 approved grow barns on 40 acres at 11512 South Bernard's Road in Malala, who already has a code violation for setting up a weapons-shooting range on the same property. And the other at 10770 Southeast 362nd and Boering, with an approved 60 leased marijuana grow barns on 20 acres, which has already been burglarized, with the burglars going through neighboring properties. These industrialized steel buildings are a misuse of our EFU farmland. Each of these buildings is leased to individual businesses with estimated, just estimated, five to six employees, let's say. That means around 300 employees' cars daily would be driving in and out of these areas. This does not include suppliers such as 40-foot semis, U-Hauls, dump trucks, cement trucks, daily garbage trucks, daily mail and delivery trucks, water trucks, large trucks with trailers and quads, 24/7. Even with odor controls, the odor is overwhelming because some locations have included hemp grows on the same lot. They are laying 60-by-100-foot cement slabs for these steel buildings and are importing their dirt and dumping the spent soil along property lines. Even the solar farms aren't bringing this type of land destruction to the county, and they are required to return the land to its natural state if they sell. Complaints include: public safety with burglaries, as was mentioned before, growers harassing neighbors' livestock, loud music and noise 24/7, 1,000% increase in traffic, and dust caused by traffic on these easement roads. Urban Oregon legalized marijuana, but rural Oregon is paying the price with these federally illegal industrialized complexes. We support ZDO 271 to allow only one licensed marijuana grow per tax lot, per tract, per lot of record, or per site address.
Thanks so much, Shirley.
Only one, thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Why don't we, we'll take both of you testimony, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Okay.
So, let's see, John, welcome.
Yeah, my name is John Yang, and I live in the Cambie area. My point of view is, as I've heard here from some of the people, we're talking about the marijuana grow and the number of licenses on the property, but it seems to be leaking over to the hemp grow, which is still legal, which was mentioned by county staff, that it doesn't include that. And I go back to the time when we, we did things here in Oregon for Measure 37 and 49, which I felt was overreaching. I was part of the group that went with Oregon- And I go back to the time when we, we did things here in Oregon for Measure thirty-seven and forty-nine, which I felt was overreaching. I was part of the group that went, uh, with, uh, Oregonians in action and they put out the action to go ahead because it was an overreach. And even the people when it went to vote were saying that, you know, you can't take away people's property rights. And I think part of what can happen here is you're taking away people's property rights who are farmers. Our family's been in the farming business since the eighteen forties and eighteen nineties. And we're, we're active farmers, we do other things, but we don't want to see people's rights being taken away by the stroke of a pen. Like, some of the concerns that they have can be addressed, but I don't want it to be overreaching and to take away people's, either their income from their, their retirements that they have in properties that they've already invested, people that have already done some of these things have invested sometimes thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars to do, uh, this kind of growth. And when we live on a farm, there's odors. You have chicken manure is very stinky when you go ahead and put it on for fertilizer. That's a very common fertilizer. You have cattle lots or pig lots, uh, they do harvest, uh, other crops, uh, corn and, and broccoli smell when they go ahead and start going into the cold season. So there are smells. That's just where you live in the farm. If you don't want to live on the farm, maybe you should think about relocating and downsizing and moving to the city. But people who are farmers that have grown up in the area and so forth, we don't want to see them losing their property rights that they have on the property that they've established to grow a crop and to create an income for their family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There clarifying questions from the commissioners? Anything? I don't see any, so thank you both very much. Uh, so we'll go ahead with Ramona Knotts and Deanna Musto. Numbers four and five, come on up.
Four and five?
What about three?
Four and five, yes.
Those are gonna be three. Those are gonna be three.
Is there any way you could tilt that this way so I can?
Can you see it? Did you hear it?
Me, I could hear it.
Okay.
So.
My name is Ramona Knotts. My address is three oh two oh oh South Shandell Road in Malala, a private road in EFU zone. My community has steer in the pastures, dairy cows that give milk and cheese, farmers plant corn, broccoli and cauliflower. Marijuana facilities put concrete on this land. Where are you going to get your food? I support ZDO two seventy-one license limits.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Deanna Musto and I'm here to say I'm totally overwhelmed. I had no idea that there were so many marijuana grow sites in, in Clackamas County and I, I can't even imagine all of these being okayed. It, with me, it's, it's a moral issue. I just think it is totally wrong. And I'm here to support the ZD two seven-one limit production.
Thank you both very much. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Darcy, I do not have number three here. If someone has number three and would like to come up now, you're welcome to. I don't see that person. Okay, there we go. Uh, would you like to testify tonight? Come on up, then we'll get back on to the rest of the numbers. Just so we keep organized, thank you. Make sure that you state your name for the record. And again, if you would like communication about the proceeding, make sure that Darcy gets a copy of your address and everything else.
I'm Liz McKenzie and I live in Oregon City. Actually, I live out on Harrison Road where they've just put in some big marijuana houses. When they first did it, I said, oh, be a good neighbor, get along here and all this kind of stuff. Since they've put in those big houses, those people have kept me awake every night. I go to work tired, every morning. Even my boss said, I'm going to stand up for you if you end up in the courtroom. They've got lights on them buildings so drastic, so bad, they're coming across their property and Mr. Beck's property into my property, into my house lights and everything else. I talked to the guy, and this is the kind of people I'm going to deal with. They, I talked to the guy and he said he would handle the situation and he would take care of it. He's done nothing. I have filed a deal with the county against him. They're saying that I've had enough. I'm not going to put up with this anymore. If you don't do something about his lights, which I read in your paperwork, they said, oh, he's up to code. No, he's not. He was supposed to stay within the boundary lines. I have just been about, drove crazy by them people. Back on the back, they were doing their big party, playing their big music. I don't know if they think they won because nobody's done a thing about pushing, saying, look, you cut them lights off or you do something. But they are driving me nuts and I've had enough. And I tell you what I said to the county, you won't do nothing about his lights, I'll give you some lights. I'll put up some and I'll have them going this way and that way and see how he likes it. Okay? So maybe this is why I shouldn't be up here. I'm for regulating, giving them out any more rights to put up any more marijuana, anything. I'll be honest, I've had it.
I, I have, I have a question. Do you know if, if it's one license there or multiple license?
I'm not sure because he said, what they said was when they, I got lied to to start with about this whole thing and said that it was going to be aquatic water plants. Well, well, it's water, I don't know what you call them, water plants. But I don't have, I'm not sure what they got, but the guy said he's got, this Christopher guy said he's got, uh, going to put, um, five different facilities in a fifty-mile radius around us. That's what he said he was going to do.
Thank you.
I'm saying, that's probably why I didn't sign his paper.
No apologies needed for their frustration. We all feel it.
What I'm worried about?
It's great to hear.
Is they're so scared, they've got these cameras over and they've got all these lights. If they're so afraid, shouldn't I be afraid for my grandchildren?
I think you should.
You're not a kitten, then, I am.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's move on to, uh, six and seven now. And eight and nine, be ready to come on up. Oh, thank you very much. Here this morning. So, uh, six and seven are at the table, ten and eleven, be ready to come on up. Al, welcome. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, my name is, uh, Al Knotts and I live in, uh, rural Mar, uh, Malala and I approve, uh, ZDO two seventy-one. Uh, would you, oh, okay, Darcy.
He has some slides, so Darcy's getting them queued up here.
Pictures up. Uh, these are two, two examples of approximately ten grown, uh, ten crops grown by farmers in our area on prime farmland. They respect our land and they are using it now and preserving it for the future. Will you go to the other one, please? This is approximately, uh, fifty to a hundred acres of blueberries grown on prime farmland. Okay. This is a start of a three hundred thousand square foot, fifty-five building, forty acres of, on prime farmland that has, that Clackamas County has allowed for marijuana, marijuana industrial site on the same farmland. To me, this shows total destruction and disrespect for our prime farmland. I showed this picture last year to a person who lives in Clackamas County and he stated, how can the county allow this to happen? I have the same question, how can the county allow this to happen to our prime farmland? This is a quote by US Attorney General, uh, US Attorney, excuse me, Billy Williams. Marijuana production is out of control. It has a negative impact on land use. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Karen Fernandez. I live at three six four seven zero Southeast Blackberry Lane in Sandy, Oregon and I am for ZDO eight four one. Um, the reason I am for it is because I am allergic to marijuana. I have to go to work around the public and have to deal with the marijuana, which is very hard for me. I have to have, use an inhaler to, to take to work, just, just being around it. And I would like it if it wasn't in my backyard. I'd like to be able to go out in my yard and enjoy it and not have to worry about having to go to the hospital because I can't breathe. So if we could limit it to where it's at, I'd appreciate it, you know? It'd be greatly appreciated for the people that are allergic to it. Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, thank you very much. Thank you. Ten and eleven, come on up. We have Lowell and Will.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Will Martin. I live out here in Clark's. Uh, I live about a mile and a half or so from Clark's School, uh, where little kids go. Um, I'm right on Beaver Creek Road. I got seven grow properties around my place within one and a half square miles. Whether they're legal or not, I don't know. The one across the road from my house used to be an old dairy farm and, um, that was sold. Uh, the people got old and sick and they had some people in there taking care of the property and they were growing dope in there and that got shut down. People from California came up and bought the property. They got seventeen, seventeen greenhouses going up. Seventeen greenhouses. I smell the stuff non-stop during harvest season. It is, I got three little boys. Uh, actually, I got two little boys and one guy in high school. He's a four-point-oh student. All my kids are good. We do high school rodeo and all kinds of stuff. I don't need to, to be part of that culture. It's being part of the culture now. It's cross roof of my house. I get a bunch of hooligans pulling into my driveway all the time. They don't have a gross, uh, facility, they're not growing right now, but it's going to be like pretty quick here. I feel and they got all the planners and stuff in there. I think that they have, he wants one license, but then he's going to apply for more licenses to bring people from Portland out to grow in their little tracts. Fortunately, I'm not into that very much. The smell is really bad. I smell all the time and now we have seventeen greenhouses going up, cross roof of my house. I raise cattle on my farm. We don't need this out in Clackamas County. We don't need it. If they want it, put it in Portland and put a grow labs in town. We don't need it out here.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
My name's Lowell Gillespie. I live on Ferguson Terrace and, uh, my primary concern was whether, what it was going to do to my, uh, property taxes. Is it gonna, is it gonna change? Uh, I live in Forest. Is it gonna change? Or am I going to have problems like I hear everybody else has? It seems to me like there is a big problem here. And I sure wouldn't want, uh, somebody doing that next to my land. That's all I have to say.
I got one more thing that, uh, he's talking about property taxes. I'm more worried about my land, being able to get my full money out of my land. Now we have a big grow site across the road from the place. Are we going to get our money out of there? We were here first. The marijuana place wasn't here. Now all of a sudden, we can't sell our place and get our money out of it because there's a grow operation across the road? My wife's family are from Walla Walla. They have a big wheat ranch over in Walla Walla. They started in eighteen sixty over there doing wheat. Well, they started, the town started moving out, so they started selling property around the place and they're moving it out and moving it out. Well, people started buying twenty-acre parcels around there and putting grapes in there. Everybody likes drinking wine, great. Now they complain about having the fields burned for the wheat that was there for hundreds of years. So it's kind of a related thing here, you know? Property values. So it's really, you guys need to really think about this dramatically. I mean, you, just like this other you got here, all those greenhouses on forty acres? You know, the smell, they're supposed to have a controlled setup in those things so they don't smell it. So if you have a plastic greenhouse, where do you have the controlled, where's the control at to keep the smell out? There is no control. You open the gate up and it, and it goes out, right?
Uh, Glenn or Jennifer, do you, uh, you may not have an answer for the tax-related question that Will, that Lowell asked.
Correct, we do not.
Yeah, that's, that was my assumption. I'm not sure that I have an answer either, so, uh.
The only, the only thing I would say is that sometimes those, I'm not sure, did you get the green postcard? So I think sometimes people think that maybe their property taxes are changing in some relationship. And so there's nothing, no part of this proposal relates to changing the way your property is taxed.
Changing the zone.
It's not changing the zoning exactly. It would restrict a use that can currently be done in your zone by limiting the number of marijuana licenses. Yeah.
There are questions for the commission?
Have you guys dealt with that here with crime, with these situations? I mean, there's a whole bunch of them here in Clackamas County and there's a whole bunch of them by my house. I deal with it all the time.
So it, it's probably worth pointing out because this has come out a couple times now.
It's huge.
Right.
And not only that, I got little kids with family. I mean, come on, really?
So, so the first thing to understand, right, is that these regulations are in place right now because we were directed by the state of Oregon. The state of Oregon passed legislation that basically said you will allow marijuana growth on EFU and other related lands. So there, to some extent, we don't have control. We can regulate it to some degree, which we actually had a very long discussion about several years ago and putting together the current regulations. And now we're trying to address some of those things, specifically the license issue. Uh, so, uh, I, I know that's not an answer that many of you want to hear, but I would encourage you to also contact your state legislatures because they are, uh, the ones that kind of have put this overall picture in place. Uh, and then we are doing our best to regulate within the context of those state laws.
A lot of our state legislators are Democrat and are for it. I'm not.
Appreciate that. Are there any other questions from the commission? Tom?
Your pictures are, the pictures are pretty disturbing when you think about it. So I, I certainly understand and kind of have the same reaction of this is considered a crop, but when you look at a, uh, production, it doesn't look like a crop. It looks like an industrial site. So I appreciate that. So the question I would, would wonder if seventeen, seems to me if that, that owner must be speculating? Or were they allowed to actually put up seventeen under a license? Because it seems to me that's, that would be more than what would be allowed under the current O, O, uh, OLCC license. Is that true? Do you know?
Well, I, so a couple of points. First, there is no restriction at the county or the state level on the number of structures that there can be. One license premises, uh, on one property could potentially have fifteen different greenhouses. I think the latest regulations allow for one license premises canopy to be separated into as many as twenty different spots. So even if these regulations are adopted, limiting one tract to one license premises, there could still be multiple structures. Also, uh, those, uh, twenty different spaces for the canopy size are just for the canopy size. There can be an unlimited number of accessory buildings, uh, for drawing, trimming, curing, office space as well. So, uh, neither the proposed limitations would change the number of structures. And there is no, uh, uh, limit necessarily on the number of licenses, of course, that there can be currently.
Glenn, let me just ask a question. Is changing that limitation on the number of structures outside of the scope of what was, what was this hearing, I would assume?
It would be.
Right. So if, if that were a desire, it would need to come back at a different time with a different proposal?
Correct.
Thank you.
So he already has, excuse me, if, so if he has these, uh, greenhouses up already and he's got planter boxes in them, does he have that license already?
So what I would encourage, I, I don't know the answer to that.
If you're going to tell me to talk to Clackamas County, you know how many times I've been on the phone in Clackamas County? You don't get any calls back.
Let's make sure that we get you in touch with staff tonight who can tell you about the enforcement process in the county and, and that's the best I can offer you. Uh, if they are outside of the regulations, there are things you could potentially do. If they're working within the regulations, we're, our hands are a little bit tied. So.
My, but like I said, I'm back to the same thing about limiting to one license instead of have multiple license on it because I don't need people pulled in my driveway twenty-four-seven. I mean, I had an ELF when there was a bird farm over there in my driveway. You know, they parked their cars, they run across and let all the birds out. You know, they parked their cars, they run across and let all the birds out. So we got pheasants running all over the place, which is all right. My bird dog went crazy. Uh, but, you know, a few years after that, these people moved in there. There are a bunch of hooligans, you know, and they started growing in there and I, you know, I don't lock up stuff at my place. I shouldn't have to. I got a thing that's called Smitty. But, um, what I'm getting at is there are a bunch of hooligans that pull in there at the end of my driveway and they sit there and park. I mean, we don't need that in our community, especially out in Clark's community.
Well, thank, thank you for your time. You, we definitely can address the license issue. That's why we're here tonight. We've definitely heard, heard your position.
I've tried to become one of these things for a long time and I can't ever make it down here, so I had to like lump up a bunch of things and then get the license thing as well.
Right. I appreciate that. Appreciate you being here. We, we really, we really do appreciate your testimony.
You probably haven't heard your last testimony with this case here either.
You're welcome anytime. Thank you very much.
So Chair Pascoe, if you want somebody to return your call about something, um, there's a staff person in the back of the room with her hand up. Uh, that's Lindsay. If you just stop and give her your name and phone number and the questions that you have, we'll make sure someone calls you back.
I hope somebody calls back. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Uh, twelve and thirteen, Charles and Jason, come on up. I feel like I'm in The Price is Right.
My name is, uh, Charlie Christensen. Is this on?
Green light?
I believe it is. Go ahead and speak up loud and, yep.
Um, I live on the Clackamas River across from Barton Park off Eden Road. Um, I have twenty-five acres of hayfields. Uh, I make about ten thousand dollars a year from the...
Charlie, I'm gonna stop you one second. Folks, it, it, uh, out of respect for the people testifying, if you could...
There's a little green light on now.
Oh, yeah, there's a green light.
There we go.
Thank you.
Um, my name's Charlie Christensen. I live, um, off Eden Road across the river from Barton Park. Um, I grow twenty-five acres of grass hay and I make about ten thousand dollars a year. My property taxes are eighty-five hundred dollars a year and I have about two thousand dollars in expenses, so every year I lose five hundred dollars. Um, I'd like to stay on this farm, um, and I really would not want the county to restrict my ability to have more than one marijuana grower should I decide to do that. Um, it's a legal farming operation. Um, and, you know, I, I need to be able to keep this farm in the family. It's been in my wife's family since the eighteen hundreds, um, and we'd like to keep it that way. Um, and one of the things, speaker number one, um, mentioned the traffic situation on these big grow facilities. This summer I, uh, interned at the one in Boring, um, on two, three hundred and sixty-second and I was there only one day a week, um, learning how to grow hemp, um, which by the way is way too much work for somebody my age. I'm not gonna grow hemp, um, but that's why I did it, to figure out what I could do with my property. Um, there were twenty cars a day coming in. Um, everybody waved, everybody drove five miles an hour, um, and it was totally non-impacting to, um, as near as I could tell, working there one day a week as an intern. Um, everybody was friendly, um, there were no wild parties, um, you know, I don't know... And I feel bad for people that have had that experience because I live across the river from Barton Park and, um, so the amplifiers of the big company parties, uh, weekend after weekend after weekend all summer long comes right up on my farm and I can hear them word for word and the loud rock bands and stuff, um, I can understand people's upset. However, the park is there and I live across the river. I did hear that.
Go ahead and wrap up.
But, uh, the beauty of where I live is such that I put up with the park.
Thank you very much.
There we go.
Appreciate it. Jason?
Hello, my name is Jason Beaver. I am, I live in Estacada and I am a cannabis compliance specialist focusing on land use and compliance. And just putting this in perspective, for a 1.2 million acre county, we're talking about point zero one six percent of the land that's been approved for cannabis production. So we're talking about a really small portion of land. Secondly, the Oregon Supreme Court has already ruled the odor of cannabis is not noxious and therefore not actionable, so that's not really an issue. And thirdly, this just won't work. Um, if you guys go through all of this time and all of this effort as a licensing specialist, I would simply change the ownership on a small percentage of one of the tracts of lands into an LLC under a different holding company and now you don't have common ownership. It's a very simple fix from my perspective as a compliance person to get around this. Um, it's, uh, it's something that often has to be done in cannabis and, and structuring different parts of your businesses and different limited liability corporations and S Corps to deal with the federal illegality and the non-conforming laws as far as Oregon and the federal government are concerned. Um, so, and the legislature is fixing this. They already stopped awarding licenses in June and they're going to figure out how to deal with this at the state level. You guys don't need to. And I'd like to turn my other half of time over to, uh, Patrick, who owns a farm here in Clackamas.
I'd like to say one thing while we're waiting for the next person. Um, per certain acreage that Glenn talked about, uh, I would support that. You know, I don't think that we need, uh, sixty growers on twenty-five acres. I would accept, uh, you know, a five acre thing. I could have five growers on my twenty-five acres.
Patrick, I'm allowing you to testify, but please keep it brief.
Okay. Um, Patrick Poehler, I live out in Sandy. Uh, I have a hundred and seven acres. There's actually three tax lots, uh, two of which, uh, are actually OLCC licensed grows. Um, I actually have been working with our local CPO for the last eight months. Uh, my company does cleanups with them and we've actually invited over forty of them for tours to our farm. Um, for, for us, um, we also own an additional seventy acres. Uh, we bought Richardson's nursery. Uh, it's ten legal tax lots. Jason and I have spent almost two years working directly with the county. Um, we have met all of the requirements for our land use. Uh, they range anywhere from five acres up to seventeen acres. Um, water rights are a huge thing, obviously, inside of this. Um, and there's definitely issues inside of, you know, paving this new path with cannabis, absolutely. Um, one of the things that I kind of would just like to address in terms of the odor, um, there's already an issue with the odor where if we're gonna look at odor, we have to look at hemp. Hemp is producing a mass amount of odor, um, but we're regulating indoor odor, which doesn't really, you know, cost the growers money, but necessarily on that same tract of land, I could have an outdoor license and produce as much odor as I want. Uh, odor is definitely a part of farming. You know, manure, um, chicken fertilizer, there's lots of things that cause odor inside of farming, as you had heard earlier today. Um, but for me, my company and my partners have spent millions and millions of dollars purchasing properties and, and really restoring lands to be able to do what we're doing. Um, in terms of increased traffic, I have twenty-five employees that all basically drive very slow and it's a, it's a huge part of being respectable in our community. Uh, I, I do care about my neighbors, um, but, but that being said, out of those twenty-four or twenty-five employees that I have, you know, that one business has generated over four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in payroll in the last ten months to our community. So there's huge benefits inside of this as well for our economy. Um, we, we just, you know, and as Jason said earlier, the, the state has realized that there's been too many licenses, too many licenses issued and they're working on correcting that. So in terms of anything that's already sought, that has already been put into place, you know, I think that these licenses need to be able to be followed through and, and have their opportunity, um, you know, as we can, we call it in, in Oregon, uh, it's the consolidation period. It's a very hard market. There is overproduction. Um, but when you look at that excess of product that is inside of the system, it's not good product. It's gonna be, you know, going anywhere and that's eventually gonna have to be destroyed. And again, those are things that our state is working on figuring out. Um, but this would impact...
You have to wrap up.
Yeah, this, this would just impact many, many businesses in, in very negative ways. Um, and I think that there's definitely ways a, around, um, the over issuing of licenses and fixing it, but it should be per tax lot and not per track because, you know, if you have five acres and there's a five acre parcel in between you, that's a lot different than someone like myself who owns literally over a hundred and eighty acres inside Clackamas County, which is thirteen different tax lots.
That was very helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
So are there any questions from the commissioner for Jason or Patrick or Charlie?
Patrick?
Yes, Michael.
How many, uh, licensees do you have on your property now?
So in terms of licensees, it, the way that there is the, the loophole of you can have a, a tax lot with multiple licensees, but for me personally, I own all three tax lots and there is only one license per tax lot, which I think is completely reasonable. Um, but in terms of that, it's basically I have what's considered an indoor, uh, use permit. Uh, it is greenhouses with artificial lighting. Uh, we do have light deprivation systems so we don't bleed light out past seven o'clock at night. Actually, when it gets dark, we start shutting at four, uh, but we do not have multiple licenses on one tax lot. It's just one for us per. And that, that, that goes for every license that we applied for in the county. So out of those ten grow lot, grow licenses that we applied for, for all of this land, there's only one of those per tax lot. It's not four per tax lot and we're not planning on having, you know, these industrial grows.
Tom?
I think you answered my question.
Great. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Uh, just for the commissioner's knowledge, we have four, uh, more test, testifiers, so, uh, we'll just go through those and then maybe take a break afterwards once we decide what we want to do. So, uh, fourteen and fifteen, Lauren and David, come on up. And then we have Will and Jokina, Jolene, uh, fifteen and sixteen on deck. David, go ahead.
I'm Lauren, Lauren Miller. I'm the trustee for Vernon Gaylor. This property is on Bernard's Road, probably not very far from where our first testimony was referring to, but I think it's maybe a different one. Uh, within five hundred feet of this property are four pole buildings that have gone up this year. Good farm property that will be used for producing something that is not nutritionally necessary as much as they want to make arguments about marijuana and hemp and whatever else, most of it is not necessary. Okay? We're creating something the state is happy to embrace it because we will get a lot more revenue, just like the lottery did for us. I strongly urge you to restrict it as much as possible. If I were to own that property of my uncle's, which I probably won't, but if I were, I'd be very unhappy with what's going on right next door. So with that in mind, put the damper on it. We legalized marijuana in this state basically on the vote of Multnomah and Lane County. It wasn't the rural people that did this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So fifteen, sixteen, or seventeen, do we have Will, uh, I'm not even gonna try and pronounce these names. Will, David, or Jolene? Anyone else who would like to testify tonight? Come on, come on up. Are you Will?
I'm seventeen. Nope, I'm David.
You're seventeen. David, come on up. And are you Jolene?
Yes.
Welcome. Uh, so David, go ahead.
I'm David Tate. Um, I live on a forty acre family farm between Camby and Mulalla on Maxburg Road. Uh, I'm the second generation of the family to live on the farm. I'd like to make sure that the third generation and the fourth generation have the opportunity to enjoy family farming, uh, which is basically the way my neighbor said here, if, if you have the ability to just lose a little bit of money every year, that's a pretty good year. Um, but it's a lifestyle. It's a, it's a place that we choose to live. I would encourage you not to restrict the zoning or to restrict the zoning to the least amount possible to make sure that myself perhaps, but certainly second generation or third generation or fourth generation of people that are on the farm have the opportunity to stay on the farm, to live on the farm, uh, and enjoy, um, living in rural Clackamas County. And it's not easy to do on, on smaller lots and we need all the options that we're gonna be able to, to utilize in order to make sure that we can stay on those lots. Thank you.
Thanks. Jolene?
Hello. I'm Jolene Cook. I am his neighbor. I live in between Mulalla and, and Camby. Um, I've been around, uh, family farms forever, from anything from Christmas trees to ranches over in central Oregon, um, and now I've married into a dairy farm. And, um, the marijuana industry in Oregon is very considerate to, to begin with, since it's not allowed federally. There is an ongoing concern between Oregon laws and federal laws regarding marijuana growth use and, uh, to further that concern, I know at least the Washington Federal Bank will not accept an ac, any accounts that are knowingly dealing with marijuana. Um, having a cash industry leaves more, um, opportunity for tax invasions and money laundering. Furthermore, the legislation of marijuana in Oregon has opened a whole new arrangement of problems. Um, with that being said, I am totally one hundred percent for being able to deal with or I appreciate being able to do what you want with your own land, but at the same time, I'm not allowed to hunt a certain amount of deer on my property without having a, a limit. I have a limit on that. My dairy farm, I'm only allowed so much manure on property, a limit. Same thing, I can't burn my wheat fields without getting permission for the day and having everything around that in order. I feel like the limits on this would need to be controlled.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Seeing none, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to share information and provide testimony to us?
Fifteen, no show.
Yes, fifteen. I don't, I don't believe Will is here. All right. So with that, I'm gonna suggest we take a five-minute break. We'll figure out how to proceed. Um, so we will be back in five minutes. Thank you all. So thank you, everybody, for being with us again. Um, I'm gonna ask one more time if anyone else in the audience would like to testify because we are about to close the public record on this. Uh, so I'm just looking out there, going once, going twice. Glenn?
Make sure your green light is on.
It's on.
It is? Okay.
It is on. He, he usually yells at me.
Recommendation of the county.
Say it again.
What's your guys' recommendation of the county from this group of people?
We are moving in that direction right now. Uh, okay, so seeing no one else that would like to testify, uh, we are going to close the public record and move into deliberations on this item. Uh, and so there has been a request from the commission to split this into two pieces. Uh, so the first thing I would like to do is take up the non-substantive, what I hope will be non-controversial pieces of this, uh, just some text languages to clarify the ordinance that is currently in place. Uh, all of the commissioners have, uh, received all of that text in the packet and have had a chance to review it. Uh, are there any comments, questions related to that piece of this from the commission? Seeing none, I would be happy to take a motion if anyone would like to make one.
I would move that we approve the second portion of ZDO two seven one to clarify the current marijuana land use regulations as, uh, stated in the eleven nineteen, two thousand and eighteen staff report.
Second?
Second.
So I have a, a motion by Mary and a second by Steve. Garcia has that. Is there any further discussion on, on those items? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? So that motion carries unanimously. So that was the easy part of our evening. So now we are gonna move on to the second piece of this. So now we are going to move on to the second piece of this. And I think, you know, the way we would normally approach this, if this is okay with you, we'll just kind of take a straw poll of folks and kind of see how people are feeling and then we'll go from there. And I'm not going to put anybody on the spot. Would anyone like to start with their thoughts and opinions?
I'll start. I think that limiting it by acreage might be something we really need to consider because the lot of record and the tract really doesn't get a handle on how many licenses for the size of the land as much. So I adopt for looking at the limiting it per acreage. But of course, then we have to decide on how much acreage to make it fair because someone might only own three acres and someone else owns 300 acres.
Mary, do you want to add to that? Because I know that you were thinking along those lines.
Yeah, so at our study session, we talked about this a bit. It makes sense to me definitely to apply some limitations. It is a unique use. But the fact that if we were doing it either per tract or per lot of record, it's proportionally treating property owners different depending on how much they own. So it makes sense to me also to limit it per a certain number of acreage per tract to me because tract, as staffs mentioned, makes sense because that's how it is defined in the ordinance and regulated in the ordinance for other factors. But we talked about in the study session trying to figure out kind of what numbers make sense. So we started with saying, yes, let's at least allow the one and then look at either a one per five acre or one per 10 acre with a maximum of something like five. And that's just to open discussion amongst us. This is kind of what we were asking staff how that would work at our study session.
Thank you. Others?
I'm, I would like to restrict it to tract. I think that's the best way to do it. I think it's less cumbersome and I think that it will be more restrictive on the number of licenses we get per tract.
I did a little background check and a little brainstorming on this and was trying to find out, come up with the fairest. And I was thinking, should there be a 100 foot barrier around each license per tract? Is that a way to regulate this? Instead of having a possibility of 50 licenses on one tract or 20 licenses on one tract, is there a possibility that we could try and put a buffer around each one? I'm not sure if that would work. But it was a brainstorm. Another thought was I ran this, what we were working on, passed an entrepreneur friend of mine, who I thought would come out with some pretty negatives on it. And he's, he got all excited and said, look what Canada just did. They just passed this and now it's gone public. You can invest in pot. And what, so I was looking at the licenses requirements in British Columbia. Anything that's going to be sold is commercial. Boom. So it's, as far as zoning, it didn't go into that. If it was medical marijuana, it was four or two plants per property, no taller than three feet, period. Didn't matter how many people were on it. So this is going to be kind of a tough one, but I was trying to gather something from around to see where we can come up with something that's fair. And I think whatever we come up with, we should reopen it to look at it again at a set time. Be two years or something of that nature.
Thank you. I will speak for staff probably in that. So I know that there is a setback requirement for the current processes. And I'm guessing that that 100 foot barrier would be well outside of the scope of what we noticed, right? So unfortunately, our hands are tied of having that conversation. Tom?
Well, this is a tough one. Fundamentally, I would agree that there should be some way to kind of limit this a little bit so that there's some control. Particularly when you see the nature of the way this crop is cultivated and grown, it seems totally counterintuitive to what Oregon land use laws were intended for, for agricultural, to have all the structure, structures put up. And so you're not really, it doesn't seem agricultural to me. And then on a personal note, there's an energy issue that goes along with this as well, that no one seems to be concerned about, but you know, those growth centers are, from what I understand, are comparable to putting in a data center in terms of energy consumption or canopy. So there's other, there are other consequences, unintended consequences by this, these changes that we're starting to see the, see, come to light. The difficulty I have is I, from what I hear, I'm pretty sure regardless of what we do, people are pretty creative and will figure out ways to structure their businesses in a way that still complies with the law, whether it's right or wrong, and do what they want to do. It'll just maybe be a little more difficult. So to me, it's really a state and a legislator, state legislators, state legislative or OLCC issue if, because we may be able to have some control, but it's still a statewide issue. So I'm having a tough time where to land on this one. Fundamentally, I would say, yeah, it makes sense to have some kind of limitations. Whatever we do isn't going to be fair to somebody. So that bothers me as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm not sure where I am on this one. It's a tough one.
Sounds great. Steve?
Thank you for the input from Liberty. It is a difficult one. The rights of the land, but also the unintended consequences of that in the rural community. So I'm in favor of, you know, having restrictions on tract, but looking at the, wanting to understand more if we can do a math equation based on acreage or the size of the tract to make it so that it's fair and equitable, but also not burdensome on the surrounding neighbors.
Thank you. Great. Thank you all very much. So I'll just share my thoughts on this really briefly. I, I don't think when we passed the regulation several years ago, that any of us really anticipated that land use implications of having many licensees on one tract. Maybe, maybe it was a potential, but we never really thought about it. And so I am approaching this very much from a land use perspective, that there's clearly implications of traffic and noise and smell and all these things that can be exacerbated by multiple people on one track. And so from that perspective, I think it does make sense to, to limit these licensees. And then the question is, how do you do it? I think that the tracked piece is too, there are so many different sizes of tracks. And if you just use a track, the number may not be appropriate for the actual size of the parcel that we're talking about, which leads me to feel that the acreage is a more fair way to do it and that it also, it strikes that balance of regulating the land use impacts, but also being fair to landowners. And I think that's the most fair approach that we could come up with. Kind of strikes that balance and walks in the middle. So that being said, I think we've all acknowledged that the question then, if we go that route is what are the numbers around that? Looking at the group of us here, there's four of us that have expressed some interest in at least talking about that more. So maybe we should have a little conversation about what those numbers would look like. I know at the planning session or at our work session, we were looking at, again, one license per five acres up to a total of five on a particular parcel tract, however you would define that, right? Let's talk about that for a bit.
I have a thought. I'm, I'm sure the intent of the license was, or the original intent was that it would somehow limit the amount of facilities or at least the size because the license had limitations.
Correct.
Right. So it'd be interesting to know what was behind that and what was the thinking? Or maybe they didn't really think about the fact that that would, that you had multiple size acreages. It was just a way of saying, we're only going to limit the licenses. A license can only grow this much and so therefore that should control it. That's kind of the fundamental basis for the license, I'm guessing. So I'd be curious to know, what were people thinking in terms of what was that intended for? Was that intended to mean a typical license would mean you'd only need, you'd only use this much of acreage? And then does that help us kind of narrow it down to what would make sense in terms of licenses?
The OLCC, when they issued these licenses, weren't thinking about acreage at all. Jennifer is shaking her head, no.
So I don't pretend to be an expert on OLCC's process, but I have never seen any indication that they were thinking about it from a land use perspective at all. They were thinking about it from a market perspective in terms of the supply, probably in terms of encouraging competition in terms, so regulatory maybe from the perspective of the black market. Their concerns are all more about the economics and not about, not about how many, which is why they will allow 20 or 40 or 50 or 100 licenses on one particular lot, but they will not allow any one licensee to have more than one. And then they regulate the size of that. So I think, I think their goals were totally different than ours.
Okay, I agree with that.
So when we're, when we're looking at it from the land use perspective, just what our body is intended to do, it's both the, the property owner's rights to use the land, but it's also the impacts on the neighboring properties. And we've heard both of that in the testimony tonight. And so as Brian was saying, I think we're really looking to try and find the balance between the two. So when we're thinking about applying something to one tract, we have the whole slew of different sizes. And when we're thinking about the acreage, we can do a number of, you know, a certain number of licenses per a certain size, but there's still a point where you have to allow the one, or there's the point where you allow so many and you're starting to get all those impacts on the neighbors and all the issues that we've heard about tonight. So even if you have a really large tract, I still feel that we'll want, we want to have a cap somewhere so that it doesn't start feeling like it's no longer the agricultural use that the property was intended for. So I thought, I think that was part of our discussion for trying to figure out what the parameters for those numbers needed to be at our study session, if we went that route.
And for that reason, I think we could even consider 10 acres instead of five as the figure that we're dealing with.
So you mean one per 10 acres up to whatever max with a minimum?
Right, exactly.
Can somebody remind me the cap on the license about amount of production?
Is it indoor, outdoor?
Yeah.
Was it 4,000?
I might just, rather than try to rattle them off off the top of my head, there is an attachment. It might be attachment C.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
That's just a copy of the relevant regulations. And in the middle of that page, there's a list of the different tier sizes.
Yes.
Yeah, it looks like the largest is tier two for outdoor, 20,000 to 40,000 square feet. And then the smallest is up to 300 or 625 square feet indoor production.
So the largest permit, it would be 20,000 square feet of production.
20 to 40,000.
I believe an acre is 44,000 square feet. So that could go up to almost an entire acre.
Two, three, 60?
Three, three, five, six.
Forty-three, five, 60. So almost an acre. Yeah. So that, that to me says if it can be that big.
Help me understand this. On a five acre parcel, if there was one licensee at their maximum, they would take up about an acre of that five acres? Is that correct? That would be the worst case.
The largest it could be.
Largest possible.
20% of the property if it's for five acres.
Indoor as well as outdoor on the one track currently? On the current?
Mixed?
Mixed production. It could be 10,000 square feet indoor.
Correct. You can have one license and grow both indoor and outdoor. There's like a four to one ratio that they apply for the amount of canopy square footage.
Okay. So we've had thoughts around one tract, one per five acres, one per 10 acres.
And that per acre would be the tract size. So we're still talking about tracts either way.
At this point, what I would suggest, Mary, if you're willing, why don't, I think we should get a motion on the table. We can deliberate it. We can vote it up or down. We can amend it. But I think that would provide some direction to the conversation. Folks agree?
Yep.
Yeah, let me look at the language.
Can we break it down into, find out if track is the direction we want to go and then, so do a motion for that. And if it does pass, then we can have conversation or maybe a motion that deals with acreage or other mechanisms that refines the original motion.
We could do that.
Can I ask a question of staff first? So if we are looking to do something in the terms of number of licenses per number of acres of a tract, first of all, does that fit within what was noticed and what we're talking about tonight, since we were talking, starting from limiting one per tract? Is that within the parameters of what we can do tonight?
Yes, because it's still limiting the number of licenses and it's less restrictive than what you notified for, so what we notified for. So that's fine. I do, and I think I heard you say this in your comments, but one clarification, what we don't want to do is draft something that inadvertently means that somebody who can qualify for at least a single license now wouldn't be able to qualify. So that's that sort of threshold. We have a two acre, it's a two acre minimum tract size for indoor production in these zones and a five acre minimum tract size for outdoor production. So I think you're going to still want to keep that sort of baseline. You get the one. And then beyond that, so the drafting will be a little bit tricky. Just as clear as you can be about what you want to have happen will be helpful to Glenn. I think I can speak for Glenn.
Yeah. Especially she'll have to prove for you.
And this is for all three zones?
Yes, correct.
So if we are going in that direction, can staff give us some feedback? Because I know we asked you to look into this a little bit at the study session. Were you able to look at it? Do you have any feedback on how it would fit as far as being able to enforce it, apply it, addressing what we've heard tonight?
Commissioner, are you asking what we think would be an appropriate number per acre?
Kind of both your impressions of how it would work if we were to propose limiting it this way, and then if you had something to compare it to for these numbers as well, your, your input on that?
And we are talking about the medical marijuana side too, not just the recreational side.
Yeah, good point.
It's a good point. And just maybe before I lose that train of thought, I'll mention that a registered grow site for medical, I think off the top of my head, the maximum number of plants that you can have at one grow site address is something like 96. So we're talking a whole lot smaller area for one registered grow site than what would be, say, one licensed premises that could be 10,000, 40,000 square feet of mature canopy for an outdoor grow. So the two are quite different in terms of their total size that they would take up as well.
So would your recommendation be to only address recreational and not medical or to do both?
That might be something that you could consider. And on that line, one of the attachments in there is that study from OHA referencing the apparent decline of medical registered medical grow sites. And that of all those that are out there, again, only some 83% is for just growing the number of plants for one patient. So there might not be the case that there's a whole lot of large medical grows in Clackamas County. But Commissioner Phillips, to your other question, I don't know that we have a specific recommendation per acre, but I guess it makes sense on the rationale that if we require, say, for outdoor production, that your tract size be a minimum of five acres, that maybe that's kind of the measure, that maybe it's one licensed premises per five acres. I think that's probably the most thought that I've given to it, though.
So moving forward, Steve, getting back to your point, I would see, just from the straw poll. So moving forward, Steve, getting back to your point, I, I would see, just from the straw poll, I think that there's a number of us who are interested in the per acreage idea. And I would suggest that we put that out there, have a discussion, and if it fails, then we can obviously go back to the individual track. I'm just, and I, I'm happy to entertain any motion that folks want to put out there. I'm just looking at the numbers of where people are sitting and trying to think about the most efficient way to, to manage this, so. I would suggest that someone put out a motion with a, a per acreage, and let's just get it on the table and we'll talk about it.
You're looking at me for this?
I'm looking at you. Or I'm looking at anyone who wants to put it out there. But I, I think, you know, the one and five acres is probably a good place to start, and we can, we can address that from there.
Clarification, so, but the tract versus the part, that, the conversation we have had also included trying to look at how we could do one license per property, whether it be multiple tracks or that, that was a conversation we had as well. Versus having one track being subleased out to 10 other companies so that you then could have 10 times the production on that same track.
Right.
And so if, if we talk about acreage, would that cover all license on that one property?
That is my understanding, and it would be based on how we would word the motion. But I, I think what, my recollection to what we were talking about was that, was the idea of allowing one license per every five acres regardless of the individual tract size up to, up to a total of five licensees for a particular address.
Thank you for the clarity, I just didn't know if we were including the.
Yeah. Does that help?
Can you guys make sure you get into the microphones?
Yes.
Okay, so the idea is that we'll make a motion and then discuss the motion?
Let's just get it on the table, we can always amend it, we can vote it down. That's the most efficient way to move forward.
Okay, let's see if I can do this, I might have to restate it, so Darcy, get ready. So I would recommend that we, the proposal be updated to limit the maximum number of registered premises or registered sites per tract based on a number of one premises or site per five acres with a minimum of one and a maximum of five.
Is that clear to everyone?
That's, did I miss something?
Just one point of clarification, currently you can have, you can have an indoor grow on two acres. So would you still retain the ability to have the one license if your tract happens to be smaller than, if it's between two and five?
Yes, that would be the intent of the minimum of one is regardless of, of size.
So friendly amendment would be up to one? Or would, stating the motion as being one, would that imply that everybody has one?
If they meet all the other requirements of the code, it would, as staff was saying, size, et cetera. The intent of the motion was a minimum of one and a maximum of five, the maximum determined one per five acres.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I ask for a second, I want to make sure everyone is clear about what Mary has just proposed. Are there any questions?
But does that exclude the indoor two acre limit?
No, that would be considered in it. So they would still have to meet the two acres minimum size to have the indoor, but it, that would still be included in the minimum of one, maximum of five. So minimum of one if you meet the 2,000, two acres for the indoor. Does that clarify?
Okay, so then a gentleman or a person has a two acre plot, they could get one license for indoor. If he had five acres, he could get one license for indoor and outdoor?
As Glenn was stating, it could be a combination, but it would still be one license, but it could be both indoor and outdoor under that one license maximum size.
Okay, I think I understand it.
Any other questions? So let me ask if there's a second to Mary's motion. Seconded by Steve. All right, let's have some discussion.
What if there's failure on one of these parcels? What if someone goes bankrupt? How's that going to affect the rest of them? I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, we should think of it now. Or if there's two that fail and we're down to one, is that going to affect any of these?
I think if they get, as far as the land use permit is concerned, if they get the permit to have five operations, one goes bankrupt, they can replace it with somebody else who meets all the other required criteria.
Okay, so that's.
So that's.
It's open.
Land use, the number will be there, who does it is not the question in the land use, under, as long as the tract is the one owner of the tract, not necessarily the licensee holder.
Now what if it's, let's just say they have 10 acres, and you talked about they could get an indoor and outdoor, the indoor for the two and the outdoor for the five. Well, if they have 10 acres, does that mean they can have four or only two total?
How does the math work, basically?
Well, if it, or even more on the indoor, that's, you know, that I'm kind of wondering that, again, like they say, you know, people will find their way around things. So if, if we're limiting it to one for every five acres, but then that includes the two acre for the indoor, and you have 10 acres, how many, I'm just asking how many licenses could you have there for indoor and outdoor combined?
If I understood the motion correctly, the motion would not distinguish between indoor and outdoor. It would just be a limit on the number of licenses. And whether or not that licensed holder wants to grow indoors or outdoors or some combination of both, it's up to them. But according to the motion, a two acre tract would get one license, a five acre tract would get one license, a 10 acre tract could have two, a 25 acre tract could have five, but a 30 acre tract could have five of any type of license or grow site.
So my question for us to consider is the one per five acres really the right number? I was leaning a little towards the more the one per 10.
And I'm leaning more for the one for 10 as well.
And I, for me, that's mostly thinking about the impacts that those operations can have and the intended use for ag and this being a different impact than other ag uses. So I don't, I'd like to hear what other people feel about that number.
So the difference is 20% or 10% of land utilization, is that, if I simplify it, is that what it is? If 40,000, roughly, round down, 40,000 square feet to an acre, 20% for a five acre tract, 10 acres would be 10%.
Right.
Again, proximate, not trying to start a riot with 43,000 acres.
And I guess it's also thinking about if you have one of those larger tracts, how large should that tract be before it's actually compatible to have five?
Can I say something? You guys are not limiting that.
Folks, we're, we're in deliberations now, the public testimony is closed, I appreciate that. Any other thoughts while I'm thinking?
I will say, and Brian, you can add to this, for, for those of you listening to our deliberations, this will go before the Board of County Commissioners. This is a recommendation to them, so there will be another space for public testimony on whatever our recommendation is and staff's ultimate recommendation for the Board of County Commissioners to consider.
Thanks, Mary. So I think one of the things I'm struggling with is this distinction between indoor and outdoor. Because to me, the, when we're building tons of building on farmland with indoor grow, that's part of the major land use problem, right?
But I think I heard, it doesn't, you call it outdoor, but it's still a structure.
Yep.
And so to me, there's not, there's not a big difference. If you're still allowed to build a structure, but it's still considered outdoor, what's the difference? A structure's a structure, that means it's enclosed, and it's, it's.
Well, to me, the difference is, there's a difference between a greenhouse covering plants versus concrete pads and permanent structures that are taking farmland out of more permanent production.
Okay.
That's, that's what was going through my mind.
But a structure is still, you still got a structure you got to take down if you want to convert the land.
Right.
You maybe not, may not have to take out some concrete, but you still got a structure.
Right.
If I understood this correct, the outdoor would include any structure that doesn't have lighting. So if you had 10 acres, you could concrete over all 10 acres as long as you don't put lighting in it. Am I correct with that?
So you, you're correct that there is nothing in this motion or in this proposal that would prevent a property owner from fully developing their lot, even with just one licensed premises, from having many structures for ancillary land use purposes. And there are structures built for outdoor production, greenhouses, even those with real serious frames for light deprivation tarts to come over them too. So there would be a lot of potential for development still otherwise on the property, I'll say that.
With EFU, what's the maximum percentage of land you can build on?
There is none.
There's none.
Zero, so you can build the entire thing, so you.
And is that by state law or is that by county regulation? Do you have any sense of that?
If, I'm going to venture, it's both.
Talking about a lot coverage limitation for structures.
Right, that's exactly what I'm asking.
I don't know if there's any, I mean, county, county code has lot coverage standards only in the urban area. We don't apply it to any of our rural residential areas either, and I think it's probably because there was an assumption that you would have larger pieces of property and you really wouldn't run up against covering, you know, in the urban area, you can cover 40% of your lot, and that doesn't count paving, just with structures. And so I think the thought was, for most of these larger lots, nobody's really ever going to be covering that much of the lot.
Until you see pictures like this, right? And, and I, and that's why, I, you know, obviously we can't address this tonight, but I, I wonder whether it might be worth flagging for a potential work item. Just this issue of permanent structures on ag land that's inherently converting the, the use of the property. And, you know, we never had that in the past, there's a reason there aren't regulations there, but it's starting to become an issue, right? And I wonder whether that's something we need to flag for a future discussion, work item for the, for the department.
Yeah, and I don't know, in terms of the state law question, there's nothing in state law that really gets at the issue of lot coverage in EFU. Where you run into difficulties is if you're restricting farm practices, and it's different from marijuana, but for every other crop, we have limitations on, and there's right to farm. So if somebody could maybe make an argument that we were being so restrictive, that they couldn't build greenhouses, or they couldn't, you know, sort of do things that are normal for farming, then I think we would have a problem, but we have setbacks, so it's not as though there's no ability. The other thing I wanted to just, maybe this gives some context, the indoor/outdoor conversation, I mean, it does seem sort of strange when you're saying, well, it's outdoor production, but it's in a structure. And again, this comes back to the purpose of OLCC's regulations, which they were actually charged with equalizing the potential yield for indoor and outdoor production. And so the issue there was light on mature plants in terms of the amount of harvest you could expect. And so that's why, it's, it's not about whether it's in a greenhouse or a pole barn, it's about whether you're putting light on those flowering plants or not.
One thing we didn't hear tonight was any kind of differentiation between people's concerns between the forestry and timberlands and the exclusive farmlands. And I almost kind of think that, you know, maybe we should explore maybe different limitations on the different zones. I didn't really hear any of that in the public testimony, but I, you know, again, you're growing a crop, it's more of a farm use, it's not a timber or forestry production issue, you know, appropriate for those zones. So anyway, that's just something I wanted to raise.
Well, we also had a comment from one of the commissioners about directing maybe some kind of sunset clause or something that causes us to look at this again in a couple of years. And so maybe that's something that can be looked into as further regulations get looked into for this. I don't think we've talked about it or noticed it to do it differently.
To do a sunset clause?
Well, to, to do it differently per, per zone district.
Oh, right, no, we haven't. I mean, you could do, if you wanted to restrict the number of licenses differently in the three zones you've notified for, I think you could do, if you decided it should be one per tract in EFU and one per 10 acres in TBR, vice versa, you could. But the more we start doing that, the more difficult it is to explain to people, the more difficult it is for, you know, for us to administer. And so, doesn't mean there's not a point to doing that, but every time you sort of decide to treat it just a little bit differently, then it, it does increase the complexity.
I feel like we'd need to find even more to base that on as well.
Again, on Mike's comment here about being able to pave over 10 acres, and what if there's failure? Now we're stuck with this paved 10 acres, the farmland that's gone. What do we do next? Because there's no market left, or something of that nature. Should we, should we be addressing that issue? That is this market going to be sustainable to what we're going to decide on also? I mean, it's at boom right now, but it may not be two years from now.
I think that's right, I think it is slowing down to some extent. I, I think the number of licensees are slowing down because the market has become saturated, right?
So our decision per track per acre, I think we should consider that.
To me, that's part of having the maximum. That's the amount that could actually get paved is part of why we're considering having a maximum number.
Exactly, because they may want to go back.
Even why it was proposed at one to begin with, that's one of the impacts that we're looking to limit.
Yes.
So under the 10 acres, you, your worst con, worst case scenario would be 10% of the property would be in grow or in structure, roughly?
Yeah, did, and I don't, I don't know that, that's, that's the, that's the canopy size.
That's assuming that someone is growing at that maximum canopy size, right?
And I, yeah, and that's the canopy size limit, so that doesn't necessarily mean that there couldn't be more than that amount for the rest of the support for the business.
Right.
We could always consider going up to 20 or something if, if we're concerned, because, right, just the canopy isn't almost an acre, but then you have all those supporting buildings and you're paving over a lot more, so we could consider 20 acres.
So we have a motion on the table for one with a maximum of five. Our options are to move forward and vote on this, or we could, someone could propose an amendment to that motion. Anyone want to express an interest?
So I'm leaning more towards one per 10 now. I think one per 20, we're getting to the point where maybe there's so few that why are we amending staff's recommendation? One per five, to me, still felt like that, you know, on a 25 acre property, having five grow operations, you could still have some significant impacts, and it could still feel like more of the industrial complex that, and have the impacts of all the traffic to that, at that scale, that would be not typical of other ag operations. So that's why I was feeling kind of like it should be one for 10.
And I think you said the magic word, it'd look like an industrial site if it was five acre parcels. I think 10 acres would be a very good starting point. We'll see what it looks like.
And the, my motion was one per 10, but we, we were not limiting where the number go on site as part of that motion, just so that part's clear. That if they were allowed the maximum of five per the tract size, that they could put the five together, they could put the five dispersed, that would be part of their application, how they're using their property.
I thought, I guess, I envisioned it, maybe this is in my mind, that if you had 50 acres and it was one per 10, they did have to be spread out. And in other words, they couldn't all be just grouped together in one small area.
So that, the intent of my motion was not to include limitations on where they could go. And I think if we tried to limit. And I think if we tried to limit it to one per five acres, then having one in this five acres, one in this five acres, one in this five acres, would actually be more detrimental to the farm use, other farm uses on the properties, or other ag uses on the properties, because then you have access to all of those, and if you clump them together, then maybe you have fewer other supporting structures, improvements on the site, so you could have larger tracts on the rest of the property to do other agriculture or resource uses.
So I'm hearing that Mary would like to amend her motion from one and five to one and 10. Steve, you seconded that emotion. Are you amendable to that?
Yes, I second the modification.
So we have a motion and a second. Would we like to have some further discussion, or would we would like to take a vote on this? Tom?
Um, I'm not sure if we're solving any, solving any problems. I solved the problem with trying to put the restrictions, so I'm not, I'm not sure it's, whatever you, whatever you try to describe is going to really make a difference. So I'm kind of neutral on the whole thing, to be quite honest. The tract was the simplest, it, uh, I think this just adds a level of complications that, that's probably not going to work for what was intended for in the first place, just because they'll find other ways to, to work the system to give as many, but maybe not. And I, and I don't know if there's, if there's a potential land use challenge that this could set up as well, I'm not sure. Because it fundamentally, it's restricting use, agricultural use, so it, it may set up a, a challenge, but I'm not sure. So, I, I don't, I don't, I don't really like any of them, to be honest. I just, it's just kind of one of those ugly problems. So I'm not excited about a limitation, because I'm not sure it's going to make any difference.
Other thoughts?
I still think it should be by tract.
Steve?
Can I, can we, can I hear the motion that was put forth, read back?
The original or the amended?
The amended.
It's amended.
Um, the proposal is to update the ordinance for the number of registered premises per site with a minimum of one and maximum of five, uh, premises per 10 acres within a tract.
And just to be clear, that was premises or registered premises or licensed premises or registered site?
Licensed premises or registered site.
Now, to, to staff, would that, if it were to carry, would that deal with the situation where we could have 10 licenses on, you know, or multiple licenses on the same acreage?
As I understood the motion, it would allow still multiple licenses if you have a tract that's large enough.
Large enough.
Um, that are on the same tax lot, same lot of record, and same tract, um, with no other changes.
So if there was a 50 acre lot, how many licenses would be?
Under this proposal, I understood it to be five.
And under the current ordinance that is right now, how many could be done?
There's no limit now.
Correct. So it'd be unlimited currently.
Correct.
And then five.
Well, I'm glad we're so, also excited about making this decision, because it's, there's no, unlike other things, there's a lot of gray here, and it's not, there's not a lot of clarity.
There's so many other things that we could, but we can't, in other words, look at to address these problems, like, you know, limiting hours where people can come and go from these facilities, but we can't deal with that tonight. So I think there's a lot of things that we need to put off to the future for further adjustment to the ZDO.
But, Tom, I, I agree, I, I hear where you're coming from, and that's part of my frustration as well. But that being said, I, I think that, um, there's something to be said about tying a use to an appropriate size of an acre that will at least help us move in the direction of reducing some of the land use nuisances and problems that could arise from the industry, right? It's, it's a balancing act between allowing this industry to move forward and grow, and also protecting homeowners that live, live nearby. And it, it just, I think, I think this approach is, there's no perfect answer, but I think that's the best we can get to.
Well, again, I guess what I'm struggling with is, what are we really trying to protect here? What's the goal of what we're doing? Is it just because we're concerned about the impact of the neighbors, and the impact and how it's changed their, their community and all the negative things? Is it because we don't like all these structures going up, because it's a different type of, uh, agricultural production? And so all of a sudden, where you envision most agricultural trees and plants, all of a sudden, now agriculture is buildings? Is that what we're, the issue? And so, so part of why I'm having trouble with this, it's like, we ought to have some fundamental goal or problem we're trying to solve that helps define whether or not this helps solve the problem. And I don't know what that is, and I haven't heard what that problem is, other than no one likes how it's going right now.
So I, I think the answer is yes, right? So in my mind, if you have many licensed, if you have any industry, no matter what the business, if you have multiple businesses on one property, the more and more businesses you have, the increase in traffic, the increase in land use impacts, and all kinds of things come down the road, right? And I think that's the problem that we're trying to solve, is thinking about how many of these businesses on a single parcel makes sense in terms of protecting and, and mitigating the land use implications of that business countywide, right? I don't know if that helps, but I, I think that's, that's where I'm at. And, you know, obviously, when you start putting more and more businesses in one location, you're going to have greater impacts. And how do we mitigate that? And that's, that's what we're trying to solve.
To me, I would add to that, that it's also trying to protect the landowner's right to this allowed use and not overly limited, limited enough to protect everything we've been talking about while still allowing it for the property owners.
Should we be looking at the statewide goals? The 19 goals and see how, what our decision could do to match the statewide goals on this?
They were addressed in the...
They're in the staff report.
Staff report addressed that, yeah.
Page eight.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I think we should move forward with a vote on the motion. And we can just do a voice vote, I think.
Maybe meet, read the motion one more time as amended.
Darcy? Read into the mic this time, because you're going to yell, get yelled at otherwise.
Appreciate. The, uh, the proposal is to update the number of registered licensed premises or registered sites per site with a minimum of one per 10 acres within a tract and a maximum of five...
Maximum 10.
Uh, wait a minute. Amend the motion from one per five acres to one per 10 acres within a tract with a maximum of five.
And that was limiting the number per tract?
Maximum of five.
Yes.
Is that helpful? Is anyone not ready to take a vote? It's your last chance to express concerns.
The concern I have, the concern I have is the unintended consequences, the way it's phrased, I kind of would like to hear from staff if there's a glaring, simple way to get around the motion so that it's, the agricultural becomes industrial, um, environment. So it, does staff believe that there's a...
A workaround?
Yeah, work, yeah, workaround, that basically just makes this motion worthless.
Um, uh, with any discussion of a tract, we run into the potential that the owner of that tract could change one of the component lots of record into some other separate ownership, and therefore, that same space is no longer considered a tract, but now in that same space, you have the potential for additional licenses. You send, end up creating a separate tract by putting one of the lots of record into separate ownership. So there is that potential.
Doesn't give them more acreage.
Doesn't give them more acreage, but it gives that one space, uh, the potential for more licenses nonetheless, if they do that.
So that's like, for instance, somewhere right now, say, has 100 acres, and then they would split it so that they wound up with two 50s, so that they could get more.
Presuming that the tract was comprised of already separate lots of record, yeah.
So that was also an issue with staff's proposal, doing it just one per tract, that they could just add tracts, but by adding in the size limitation, even if they divided up the number of tracts, there's, there's still going to be a cap sooner with this proposal because of the, you know, one per 10 acres. So if you have 100 acres, you would only be able to divide it into two tracts to get the maximum, whereas without the number limitation, as staff had proposed, you could divide it up into a lot more tracts to get more permits.
That's right, yeah, that's a good point, that, um, yes, you could remove one of the component lots of record from the tract in order to get additional licenses on that other lot, but you're also then reducing the overall size of your remaining tract, and that restricts the number of licenses you can have as well.
So I have a question. So the definition of tract is one or more contiguous lots under the same ownership, right? What if we didn't say tract, and we simply said one or more contiguous lots? Does that make any sense?
The lots would have to be under the same ownership, or, so you, I think the result would be the same, because you would be trying to limit, if they're, they're in totally separate ownership, you, I'm assuming, wouldn't be trying, are you saying you want to apply licenses, license limits based on different owners?
So what I'm trying to get around is this concept that one owner owns these three lots that are contiguous, that's a tract, right? So in order to get a second license, they go and sell off one of their other tracts to a business they set up, they have a, therefore, they increase their numbers. And is there a way to apply the acreage limit not just to contiguous ownership, but to, and this is the problem of trying to think on your feet at, at the middle of a hearing, right? Is there a way to, is there a way to not necessarily tie it to ownership, but if, to say, a total acreage, there's only so many licenses on a set, a total contiguous number of acres?
Regardless of who owns it?
Right.
It becomes extremely difficult to administer, because you're into this, who gets in the door first and gets the licenses, and we have to start tracking that, and then when they don't fulfill the licenses, how long do they get to, yeah. I, I would be very concerned about trying to do that. And I would say, if the overarching concern is to limit as much as possible, then you go back to the one per tract and move on.
Right.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, we're balancing a number of different concerns, right?
Yes.
Okay, so let's try this again. Are we ready to move forward to a vote? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Two opposes, two, in opposition, any abstentions?
Carrie's.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so it passes five to two, and that meets our core requirement. So, uh, thank you all for being here. This recommendation will be forwarded to the county commission. They are going to have an entirely new hearing, uh, you all, they will have public testimony. I would encourage you all to attend and participate. Uh, the county commission will obviously give some weight to our process, but, uh, they have changed and, and, and gone with our recommendation and not gone with our recommendation to pass, so I encourage you to continue following along. Thank you very much for your help tonight. I don't think that we have any additional business. We have no minutes to approve. We have another hearing coming up on December 10th, um, with regards to floodplain. Anything you want to say about that, Jennifer?
Just, this was an unexpected addition to our work program, which I think we talked about at your last meeting, because FEMA said you have to do this now, or you won't be part of the national flood insurance program anymore, and, uh, it has to be adopted by January 18th, so we are moving as quickly as we can. So that will be, um, your only item now for December 10th, since you finished this tonight. Uh, and then for January, um, we have added, I did send an email out, we've added, um, not a hearing, but a work session for Janu, it's in your normal meeting, January 14th, um, to do a couple of different things, some training, and of course, it's now escaping me what I said the other, we've got two things that night, but we're going to do some training, but there's no hearings.
It's in the email somewhere.
No hearings that night. And, uh, and then the 28th, you'll have a quasi judicial comp plan amendment and zone change, and a study session on, um, some amendments to our low density resident, residential comprehensive plan policies that is on our work program for this year. Uh, and we're going to the board in a study session for that, uh, next week, so we hopefully will have some kind of sideboards on that conversation by the time we talk about it on the 28th.
What's the comp plan proposal regarding, for the hearing?
Martha? This is the MR1 to C3, or, the comp plan zone change, remind, remind me what that application is.
Oh, gosh, um, sorry, I wasn't paying attention, I was rewriting the motion. Um, so, the proposal is for a really small piece of low density residential R10, um, to go to a C2, quarter commercial zone, um, to be developed in conjunction with an adjacent property that already is zoned commercial.
Where's the property located?
Oh, gosh. It is located, um...
Clackamas County, right?
In Clackamas County. Now, it's, it's located, I believe, just up off of 82nd, um, sort of north of Clackamas Town Center area. It's, it's within the regional center design area boundaries.
All right. And just, I guess, a word of just, I don't know, caution, um, we actually anticipate a very full calendar for you for the first half of this year, so I would assume that you will be, unlike past years where we have tended to cancel for a number of meetings, at the moment, I don't think there will be much of that between now and the end of June, that the two meetings will be pretty solid. I'm not sure about the second meeting in March right now, but everything else is pretty full, so, um, and then, we will get a calendar out, I haven't even talked to Darcy about that, but, um, something that kind of looks ahead to what we know for the whole year, but gives you all the dates and talks about what we think is coming. And I, please do note that on February 11th, which is your regular first meeting in February, that is set for the annual joint meeting between the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning Commission, so, um, by all means, please come if you can, it will be, uh, we'll do dinner first, and, um, it'll be here. Um, and so we'll do dinner first and kind of a little bit of socializing, and then actually, um, a discussion about kind of long-term vision for planning in Clackamas County, and, um, so, I'm hopeful, hopefully, it will be worthwhile for all of us.
But there's no...
In other words, for the first six months, plan on being two meetings a month?
I think so, there's a, there, like I say, I'm not sure at the moment about the second meeting in March, but there's definitely a lot on our agenda, and so I anticipate trying to fill those meetings as much as possible. We have a lot to get done this fiscal year still, uh, that was on the work program, and the floodplain item was kind of an addition, and so, yeah, I, I think we'll keep you pretty busy.
No second meeting in December, though.
No, no meeting on Christmas Eve, definitely not. So, yeah, you guys are off until, uh, December 10th, and then it'll be a break until the 14th of January.
I, I do think an email with a list of dates for next year, so that we can all have them on our calendar would be really appreciated.
Absolutely. We will be doing that.
I'll try to plan my travels as best I can.
Does the planning department receive the new maps?
Brian?
Yes.
There was one thing.
Did come in.
Yes, Steve has those. It turned out they were in disaster management.
We didn't really...
They had them, we didn't.
When we had the two issues, uh, concerning, obviously, whether we did tract or lot of record or acreage, then there was also the others... record or acreage, then there was also the others, uh, point, bullet point number two, which is whether it affected existing, um, licensees, or, and we didn't seem to really address that. I'm assuming it doesn't, but we didn't even address that.
We addressed it because, one, because there's no, there wasn't a decision for us to make on that. Um, it, it is what it is, because it, it won't, it, in theory, it won't affect, as Glenn was kind of laid out in his proposal. So there's, we're not making any changes in theory to those existing owners, although it's kind of a gray area as well. But it didn't require any action on our part, which is why we didn't take it up.
Right, it was just on the, and so.
It was just a significant issue that Glenn wanted to make us aware of.
Okay.
I had another question, but I wanted to wait till afterwards. So I'm just curious, what's Colorado and Washington doing about this issue?
I would be curious, but, you know, it's, uh, an uphill battle already just to figure out what our own state is doing, to try to fill my braid with what Washington is doing.
I brought it up, because I thought that article you sent, from the, was pretty, pretty enlightening.
Yes, we're adjourned.
Can you restate? It was short, and it got to the point.
Yeah, and, and so I, but I thought I don't want to bring up another state in front of the audience, but, um, I was just curious if you'd looked at what they had done, or if there's, are they, are they expert?